I call this meeting to order at 6:33 PM. Begin with public input. Anybody here from the public that has a comment? Okay, moving on, we begin with our student report. And we have two people here today. So we have, what is it? Shanaya?
Shanaya.
Shanaya Venma and Sydney Palmer. So, welcome.
Hi. For notable academic matters, we have the Academic Decathlon, and it was last weekend, and many North Reading students they won. And they traveled to Springfield International School to complete in the preliminary rounds. Nora Denninger, she placed second in five events. And Rafi Toby placed second, third, fifth, in six different events.
Awesome.
That's great. For notable fine arts matters, Chorus is going to be singing at the Senior Center on December 4th, and the tree lighting on December 1st. Also, tickets for the musical play Mean Girls are also on sale, and it starts on the 6th of December.
For notable athletic matters, the Powder Puff Football Game is tomorrow, and the Thanksgiving Football Game is on Thanksgiving. Winter sports start December 2nd.
And for other, we had our homecoming as well on November 15th. And overall, it was a very successful event. We had around 380 kids there, and everything ran pretty smoothly. Spirit Week is also currently ongoing, so on Thursday it was Pyjama Day last week. Friday was Country versus Country Club. Today was Jersey versus Jersey Shore. Tomorrow is Decades Day, and Wednesday is Half Day with the pep rally. And each class has their own class colors, and they wear those to the pep rally. And then also, we had Kids Night Out on Friday. Around 135 kids showed up, and it was a Student Council-run event, and that also went pretty smoothly. And lastly, we also had DECA testing for the competition that is coming up on December 10th for individuals, and December 11th for team.
And yeah, going on with like the DECA testing, it's each kid who signs up for DECA has to take a test before the competition, and the test consists of 100 multiple-choice questions on like your given topic. So, I'm in the club, so my topic is entrepreneurship, so my test was just all types of questions you would see. And then, our student work reports.
For my student work report, for anatomy, we had our projects, and mine was on muscle contraction. And basically, we just filled out a slideshow on like, for pretend we're backpacking to some like foreign like island, and basically, you would write about things that you would take along with you, and foods that would be beneficial to you, and exercises in order for your body to maintain like a healthy balance.
And then, for my AP US History class, we wrote a paper on like reformers, and who would make the most effective like changes in the 19th century society. And this topic like discusses activism of the reformers. And I chose Sarah and Angelina Grimke, and they were two sisters who were from a slave-owning family in the South, who became strong advocates for women's rights and the abolition of slavery. And then, the next day, we got put into like three different groups, and we kind of created like a draft. So we essentially got to pick like the reformers we wanted like on our teams, and then we kind of just debated who would have like the better reformers, and who would have the most like effect on society in the 19th century.
Excellent. Okay, comments, questions?
I would have loved to have been there for that debate. That sounds awesome. Did you win the debate?
Our group came in second.
Nice.
Like when my soccer team doesn't win, I say we come in second too, so it's, I get it. Couple random questions first. So, I heard homecoming really promoted this year. I don't know if it was just because now we have older kids, but is this like the first year they've really done it, or is it the first time it was not at campus? Was it different this year? It seemed different.
This year, it was, it was in Peabody Olio's. It was a venue. Normally, past years, we've had it at the high school, like in the gym. Last year, we had it at the cafeteria. But this year was like the first time it was like really successful, because last year, we only sold 50 tickets to the snowball in the cafeteria. And this year, we sold 386 tickets.
Wow.
Nice. Well done.
It was a pretty huge fundraiser for Student Council.
There's a lot of well-dressed kids driving through town if you left around that hour. What's going on?
So I assume this is probably gonna be, they're gonna try to do that again next year, I'm guessing?
Yeah, hopefully.
Yeah. And then, my only, since this is your first time here, so I guess my general question to you guys is first, like what made you want to be a student rep here? And sort of just maybe introduce yourselves a little bit, like, do you play sports? You mentioned you're in DECA, like sort of, what are you guys involved in?
Well, I wanted to get involved in like student rep, to kind of become more like involved with like our community, and kind of knowing what's like going on in like North Reading. And I'm in DECA, Model UN, mock trials, Student Council, interact, and then like outside, I do TOPS. And then, for like sports, I play soccer all year round, but then, for the fall, I play soccer. Winter, I play on the girls' basketball team, and spring, I play on the spring softball.
So you're pretty busy.
Yeah.
Any comments on the university coach? I'm just kidding.
So adding on what to what Sydney said, I also am, I have a leadership position in Student Council, so I often do see a lot of like conflicts and stuff like that throughout our school. And just having a student representative position would really like help me voice those certain conflicts and things we have, and just advocate for my school. And I'm a junior, I'm part of Student Council, DECA, Red Cross, Model UN, and I believe ASL as well. And, yeah. Great.
Welcome. Look forward to having you guys here. If you have comments on things on the agenda, you can, you know, let us know in advance. If you wanna, we can sometimes take things out of order if you wanted to, you know, comment on things before, but, you know, just overall, you're welcome to leave after this section if, you know, you have other things to do. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Nice job, guys. So moving on, we have no continued business, so we'll go to the new business. Do you want to start with air quality project, Dr. Daley?
Yeah, so we have some people on the line from the Sustainability Committee that are gonna share, this is an idea that was presented to us. We've been talking about it with our facilities team, and I also wanted to have a chance to just talk about it a little bit in open session with you, just to hear about it. Ushapla is on there, and I don't know if you want to present anything? I think you're muted. Hold on.
Right. You gotta adjust the volume in here, Ms. Palai.
Can you try again?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I don't have the slides, I'm just gonna talk about it just for you.
That's great, yeah.
Do you want me to get started now?
Yeah, please, thank you.
Okay, so, I don't know if Devin's there, but she's, she's from the Sustainability Committee, and she and I, we had, you know, applied for a grant, which was offered by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, MAT-BEP. We were offering, you know, grants to local groups or municipalities to install air quality sensors around towns, you know, so we were, we were on grant, and we have 10 air quality sensors to install around the North Reading. And we already installed four of them. We have another location finalized, and we're looking for, you know, a few more to do. So I had contacted Daley to see if we could install three sensors in the different schools. So, Maryland High School would be one location, and then Little School, and the Hood School. So this is, you know, we are any, we get like a geographical, you know, like diverse of the locations of the centers. There's a little bit of a echo, so I'm, you know, I'm not sure. Anyway, I'll do my best. So, okay, so with these sensors, these are like really kind of tiny sensors, they, you know, they're at the palm of my hand, they're about maybe three inches diameter and, you know, same height. And they are meant to be, meant to be installed outdoors, so they do need access to, you know, a power outlet. And also, they have to be in the vicinity of Wi-Fi, so they need 24-hour access to Wi-Fi. Now, the power requirement for each sensor is like really, really small, it's about one watt. And I have, you know, like one installed at my, at my home, and I've had it for about five weeks, and I haven't noticed any, you know, problem in my, like, nothing noticeable in my, in my legacy table. So, and then, yeah, each, so each device has like two sensors, and they detect, so the two sensors are built in for redundancy. And the data that these sensors collect, that's transmitted and displayed on a website, and that updates like every 10 minutes or something, so that data can be downloaded. And it's a free download. And, you know, we were, we were in touch with the high school ECO team, and, you know, Ms. Carrigan, she said that, you know, that it would like make for a very good science project, you know, for students to collect the data. And my son, who's a senior in high school, he's also, you know, interested in making this into a science project where this science is done. So, he's actually been helping me install, you know, some of these sensors around the residential locations. And what does the sensor measure? It's, you know, they measure air quality, like, for, you know, these are very fine particulate matter, which is two, which are 2.5 micron or smaller. So that would include smoke and fumes, and any other kind of industrial, you know, pollution sort of things. So, and, you know, like, right after I installed my sensor, you know, two days after that, the red fire started, so it's been interesting to see, you know, like, the sensor readings, you know, go up whenever there's smoke, and you can actually, like, I can smell the smoke. And interestingly, you know, like, the readings that I get from like my web app, my apps, you know, the weather apps and all, those readings are like, you know, they just tell me, oh, the air quality is just fine, but, you know, that I can smell the smoke, and, you know, the actual reading from the device is, you know, corroborates that. So these sensors are really, really handy, and, you know, our town's Board of Health is also interested. So we have, Devin and I are gonna be talking to Devin in about an hour, and, so I guess, you know, so I'm just sharing it, and, you know, like, having the schools, you know, the three schools that I mentioned, install these sensors, just, you know, and, oh, and the sensors have to be active for a minimum of one year. And there's a requirement to return the sensor or anything, so as far as I know, you know, these are sensors, you need to just keep them. The schools can keep them. And as far as maintenance goes, they're like pretty low maintenance, and Devin and I, you know, we, we monitor these periodically on the website, just to make sure that they're working. And if there's any problem, you know, we can like flag them and like work with, you know, the sensor or the person who, you know, owns the location. And, you know, we have some instructions, like there can be, you know, like some maybe, you know, cloudy of one of the sensors or something, and it's, you know, just requires a little bit of piping and stuff like that. Anything more than that, you know, like, we can handle it, you know, we can get replacement parts from the DEP and all those things. But, you know, I mean, so far, I've had no problems in any of the sensors that we have installed. So I think that's about it from my side. I see that Devin joined. Devin, did you have any, anything planned? You're muted, so.
Okay, finally. Hi, it's a win-win situation. I was online looking at the Purple Air today, and each one of those sensors are $289. And it's a great product from what I'm reading about it. It's educational, and it makes us aware of our environment around us. So I think it's great that it could be on schools, so that we could use that as a teaching tool also. Is it about it?
Okay, thank you. Dr. Daley, any thoughts?
I just had a question about after the year, do we still have access? Is that data still in the website? And is it, is it something we have access to, or does somebody else have control of that? Are you guys able to manipulate that data, or is that being collected by some third party?
Oh, so the, yeah, the company that makes the sensor, that's called Purple Air, and they are the ones who have, you know, provided these, like, the DEP works with this company. So, you know, the data, I mean, it's all transmitted, and then it gets displayed on their website, it's publicly accessible, and you can download it in like, I think they're like 14-day implement, you can download, download it for free. Beyond that, you know, like, you have to pay for it or something like that, there's a payment system. But, you know, the instructions from the DEP were that, you know, 14-day period, it's free. And, like, you know, it's there for anybody to download. I've looked at the data, and, you know, if you just download it and do a, you know, file, then you could use it as you like.
Okay. And did you, did you mention the other spots in town where they're gonna be? How many are there, and what are the other spots other than the three schools?
Yeah, so we have four spots. One is my residence, which is in Edgewood. And the other, okay, one I installed yesterday is on Barrichway, which is off of North Street. And there's one off of Caber, not too far from that, maybe about a mile. And then there's one very close to that school. So that's why we're not picking that, because we already have a sensor there. And as for the high school, you know, it's kind of close to that, but it has a nice elevation, and I think, you know, that would provide like different back data.
All right. So, I have a few questions, but I want to just restate exactly what we're talking about. So, there was already a grant obtained to get these, or there would be a grant that would be issued for doing this project? Is, was there a grant already obtained in order to buy these devices? Or is this something that if we do this, there would be a grant, there would be grant money associated with that?
No, we all have, we, we applied for the grant, we were awarded the grant, there's no money involved, it's all three sensors. We have, we got 10 sensors already, and we've already installed four of them, and we have like five more, you know, like available, you know, we installed.
And I guess my, my main question would really be for facilities, but, so if they have to be outside, but they have to be plugged in?
Yep.
Do we have outdoor outlets they'd be plugged into, or?
That's what we're, we're looking into now, to see the feasibility of even having them on the buildings?
Yeah. Because the concern would be if they have to go, like, I'm just thinking of how I would rig something at home, where like, you're going through the window, and we wouldn't want windows to be unsecured or things like that. And so, I don't have a problem with that. It seems like a great program if we could participate, but it can obviously impact any security issues. And so, do you want to make sure that it was an outdoor outlet that was available that wouldn't be impacting anything else?
Minimal invasion, minimal cost to any, to any of it.
I think likewise, we'd want to check with Dr. Downs on the network, and make sure that it's connected on properly firewalled and accessed, so we're not exploiting potential of the, you know, the network. If they're wireless.
Is it possible on a roof of a building?
That's, that's what we will work with facilities on, yeah.
Yeah.
So what's?
Raymond?
Yeah, I guess where I want to go is, the data is good, what do we expect to do with it? Like, what's the next step after that? Is it to say, okay, we have, and fairness of full disclosure, actually, I have one of these systems set up in my house, of course I do, right? With, with the sensor and all that stuff. But is the goal to set up filters that are connected to the sensors, and therefore, you know, you modulate the air depending on the sensors? Like, where, where is this going?
The sensors are outside, not inside.
True, but you'd think worse air outside equals want to filter more inside. Like, it's, it's good to have the data, and I think the data in itself is interesting, but is there some action we're planning on taking with it? Are we gonna incorporate this into environmental studies? Like, where, where's it going?
Are you asking me?
Anyone. Anyone.
To my knowledge, all that we're being asked is, can we be a site? I'm actually surprised that there's not other town sites. It sounds like it's residential, and then the schools. I'm surprised that it's not like at Ipswich River Park, or?
Right.
You know, so I guess I'm, I don't know why it's at the schools. And one concern I have is just, you know, last week with the, the brush fires, you know, would we be getting all this data on conditions in the building? And I just worry about, you know, why we, why that's the data we would have is just at the schools. So, why, why are we not at other, why isn't it at the library or the town hall or Ipswich River Park?
We're working on that.
Yeah, we're working with the town to finalize location. Now, you know, for the park, you know, park is not a good location, because there's not going to be any Wi-Fi, and, you know, it's not feasible, right? So it has to be near a building. And, you know, as far as like using data, like, you know, I think like science teacher would be, you know, would be able to answer that better. But, you know, like, you know, what, what Ms. Carrigan mentioned to me was like, it would be interesting to see how the, you know, how the air quality fluctuate, like with, there's like, you know, a lot of traffic in the school premises, as opposed to, you know, when there's, you know, some, you know, things like that, you know, would be of interest to the students.
Fair enough.
Okay, so, it doesn't have a vote for anything. I think, I think the idea here, yeah, I mean, I think, it doesn't sound like there's any opposition per se, but there's concerns about, you know, making sure that it doesn't impact anything security-wise, both cyber security and physical security.
Yes.
Understanding where it would be if these are other outlets that are used for other things, because if there's an outdoor outlet and that's how we get, you know, power when we're running something, I think, I think there needs to be more information obtained. But I think it's a meaningful project, so I think there's just more questions that we have, and we would need some answers to, in order, before saying we agree with it. That, what I'm hearing from people generally?
I think to Dr. Daley's point too, I think it would be good to see a town-wide map of, you know, so the DPW, the Town Hall, whatever, and make it more of a town initiative rather than focus on just the schools. I think it would be good to get buy-in from, from TA and what it would mean across the entire town.
Yeah. And this is coming from a town subcommittee.
Okay.
So it's not residential, just to make a clear name.
Yeah.
Yeah. The only other thing too, and obviously, Dr. Daley, you mentioned this, but with the facilities, like, if it's, if it's on the roof, like, they can't access, like, the people on the committee wouldn't be able to access it if it needed maintenance, so then does that become like a burden of the facilities, or if it?
Those are the things we gotta work out with our team.
Yeah, so.
Okay. Well, thank you for the presentation, and good luck with the, with the project, and keep us posted, and, you know, if you have other questions later on, we'll talk to you guys again.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on on the agenda, next we have Mr. Kline presenting on the MCAS and Accountability Studies. Accountability. You gonna go up there, or do you want us to go in? Oh, we can stay here, that's fine.
I want to thank you for the time tonight. It's a, it's always a, well, we've been fortunate to be able to have a time to be able to celebrate some of the success that we've achieved in our schools, and the work that our educators have done. So my hope tonight is just to kind of review the highlights and the takeaways from our 24 data, talk a little bit from what we have culled from that, to set up some of our student learning goals, district-wide and building. I also wanted to take just a quick second and talk a little bit about question two and the impact of what North Reading Public Schools might be, and go through there pretty quickly. One of the biggest things that we've been focusing on for data the past five years, four years coming out of COVID, is getting back to 2019. So everything was targets, getting back to where student achievement was, where student growth was, and how we moved along in our district as compared to other communities in the state. So, on the highest level, we look at North Reading Public Schools continues to perform well above state averages. You can see the achievement scores, the scale cut score there. Then, when you go one step deeper into our DART districts, which is on that accountability page, we're still well above average. We fluctuate, you know, I think the data clusters are so close every year, like sometimes you might pop up a little, drop down a little bit, but we're still well above average in all of our DART districts. And then we want to continue to take a look at our reference targets, so what the state set for us to improve, what we can control. So they'll take a number where we are, here's the number they want us to go, and then they tell us how many years we have to get there.
And can you just explain DART?
DART's the neighboring communities that have, are built very much like North Reading. And we have two, we use two resources now, so we use the state list, and then the other one, which is a great tool, which I'll reference in a second, is Open Architects. And we use, not only do we have the ones that the state assigned to us, but we pick neighboring communities as well. For our highlights, this is where I actually pulled this from Open Architects versus the state, so the numbers would look a little different for you. But when we pulled the average scaled scores throughout the district, I want to highlight the grade five across the three elementary schools. Number one in state for ELA and science, with the Hood School being the top performer in the science scores, but the, obviously, the batch and the little right there to be able to carry that distinction. These next few are in the top 10% of the state. That was what I used to cut. I had to figure somewhere to stop celebrating, so that's where I figured I would go. And then, in the parentheses, that's how they performed comparatively to the communities that you see listed above. So you see grade nine science, which is one out of 15, grade eight ELA in math, both second out of the 14 there, science four out of 14, grade six ELA, five out of 15, math one out of 15, grade five math two out of 14, grade four ELA, one of 15, and two of 15 on the math, and then the grade three LA for five of 15, which is, if you look, that covers just about almost all of our testing grades and content areas. And like I said, we cut at, I cut at 10%. To go down and find those next grade levels, you're gonna be within the top 25%. I just didn't want to put every single one on there, as far as that goes. So it's something we're very proud of, the work of our schools and our teachers. Just to kind of, just remind you like a little bit on the accountability piece, we have the normative part, which is the percentiles, that's how we compare to schools that are like ours and within the state. So when you hear reference to accountability and a percentage, it's usually being compared to something else besides North Reading. And then when we talk about our criteria and reference component targets, that's where our goals are set against for ourselves, so where we put ourselves in the growth that we want to make as a district. So we just talked about that, we kind of go through, the bottom kind of shows their weighting system, right? It's being rebuilt, because not having data in 2020, and then in 2021, that became our baseline again. They waited for the 22 data before they started to pick the patterns and put out the targets. So just on the accountability part, they don't assign accountability to the district. You can see very clearly, our elementary schools continue to perform above the 95th percentile to schools that are compared to like them. The middle school cracked the 80% time for the first time this year, which they're very excited about, being at 85. And the high school was at 76% this year. You know, the one thing that we always talk about, because it's always hard when you look at numbers like this, obviously, we all want to be performing at the highest level possible. There, the factors that go into play, and the difference between 76 and 80% is minimal, you know, as far as achievement scores, student growth, extended engagement rate, whatever the high school is looking at, chronic absenteeism, and that work that goes along there. The progress towards targets, that's the part that we look at, and they, the math is built out a lot more complicated, but every single group, all students, special education, low income, whatever the groups, anything with greater than 20 students in that category, we get data on to tell us how we're doing. we get data on to tell us how we're doing with. So when you see they set the goals for the district in each school, you can see how we're doing with those targets. And I wanna say like even when I'm looking at the, the 68 and the 76, 75% is met target, okay? And so when you, and I'm gonna show you one slide in a second. So when you see the three or the two, the two just puts you just slightly below that target, but becomes a 50. So when you start to average like that, it can, it can differentiate a little bit. This is, I believe, grades three to eight ELA, just a random pick, right? This is all publicly available data that you can get off of the DESI website. But just to kind of give you an idea of what that might look like. So you see how they set the 23 achievement scores. They have our 24 achievement scores. They put the change there and then that's our target for 2024. Gives you the number of students in each group and those points assigned for there. So you can see the, the four, you get exceeded where your target was. Your three is your met target in 75. Your two is your improved, that's gonna be the 50. The no change is the 25. And then the zero for the, that declined like on the percentile part. The two differences on the paths, when you see path forward, that means our, when they set the baseline, our data was so close to 2019 that the really, that improvement is what they always gave us. Like even in 2018, 2019, we always had targets. So it's, it's much more like that. And then the recovery was, we were still a little bit below where we were in 2019. So they would tell you by how far, how close, how many years they wanted you to close that gap. Chronic absenteeism was one that I know that I've been here and the schools have put a lot of time and effort to try to work on this coming out of COVID. So that's just the definition that we use. It's a 10% of their days in membership. So if it's 180-day school year, that's gonna be 18 days or more. And then you go through there, if you're there for less, you know, or not part of that whole year. So I left the 2019, so you have non-high school and high school. So that's grades three to eight and then the high school group. So I didn't wanna get into each school's work. But you can see in 2019, in the non-high school, we were at a 4.4% chronic absenteeism rate. In 2023, we're at 7.8. So through the effort of the schools and some of the grant work and money that we had to be able to do that, you saw that that reduced from 7.8 to 4.7 in 2024. A good change with our target, exceeded our target. So we got four points on the accountability for that. At the high school, you're gonna notice, right? The 6.2% in 2019 is, is still a lot lower than where we are. In 2023, we were at 13.9. Um, at 2024, we, we dropped down to 12.6. You know, so we're, we still have about a little work to get to with that 6.2 is if we're gonna say that's the norm. You know, this is where our school counselors are, are gonna continue to help us. Coming out of COVID, we found that a lot of students actually enjoyed remote learning a little bit better and were a little bit more successful in, in some components. And then coming back to school for whatever reason might have been more difficult. So when you get to that and you start to go into anything else that can cause absences, extended vacations, off of college visits, you know, whatever that might be, you get to that number pretty quickly. But they're doing a ton of work at the high school level to engage these students and figure out. And then what the next step for us is to be able to look at all those subgroups, like we looked at the other data, to see where different groups might be struggling to get to school regularly and what those reasons are and what supports we can provide students and families to make sure students get to school. The district goes through a process where every school, our teacher leaders, our administration, does a unified data response. We kinda build out questions that we ask them to reflect upon. And then they come back and share with us the work that we do. We always focus on celebrating the success, right? Like, cause you get, you catch yourself quickly always looking for what you wanna do better. But we do so much so well. Um, and so many people will say, well, look, we do here. But what makes us better than good is we're always looking to improve. The curriculum leaders work with their teachers in grade level to really look at the item analysis part. That's where we decide where our curriculum might need some work or some instructional practice that might be successful in one classroom that we might wanna see in others. And we also kind of can work off of some of our professional development goals with that as well. And then we have our data leaders at each building. They'll work with myself and administration to kind of review grade level and department trends. We look for patterns for group performances that kind of let us reflect upon questions and set goals for ourselves. So going through all the data this year and the work that we did and kind of trying to articulate some of the areas that we wanna focus on. The past couple of years, we've worked on implementing a new curriculum in our K to two classrooms for ELA. So we've put in new highly, high-quality instructional materials. Continue to provide professional development on early literacy and growth. And then our tiered system of supports to support students that are needing a little bit more work in tier one and tier two. Some of these goals are going to be impacted by some of the changes that we've had to make due, due to the budget. Losing our academic interventionists, not having a literacy coach to be able to, to lead some of this work closely with the teachers in their classrooms. Does make this goal a little bit harder for us to obtain. But we are looking at, and I'm using the MCAS data for there. You'll see, we wanna get that up to about 10 or 15% higher. And I didn't write it down off my head, I think we're around 64, 68% in grade three there. So I really wanna get it up to 80%, but I wanna be kind of realistic with that. K to 12, every single school across the board talks about trying to better understand how students' written response can be monitored to understand progress. Um, I think it's one of the hardest things that we do. We don't always get to see what the students write, what they submit for the state and how it's evaluated. We get the rubrics. We, we have been able to get anchor papers from the state in the past and work through there. And starting as early as, as second grade and talking about what a constructed response is, and that's just a short answer response, that's more than one sentence, to, all the way to the essays that we write in 10th grade. So we're working kind of at that, I think we picked grade four level this year. And we're gonna try to go up and piloting, just trying to create a student writing portfolio that will be digital and for us to be able to maintain student writing from year to year. So what happens too often is teachers look at the students' writing and sometimes it's the first time they see it and they don't understand if their students had performed better than what we're seeing the first time. And that cycle just gets a little bit stale. So we wanna be able to measure students' writing annually and have teachers have access to that portfolio. So both the educator, the family and the student can see growth in their own writing that hopefully, hopefully transitions to any of the testing that we do. And then as I, I quickly mentioned, we are all students, are high achievement. Our work really still continues to be in our identified groups to be able to set real targets, to be able to set professional practice and student learning goals of what we'd like to see specific students grow and how we're gonna get them there. And then to make sure we're monitoring that progress along the way so we can see if we're being successful. Because the MCAS, I still will say, it is, it's one set of data. We, we build a lot of other things in to try to make sure that we're there. Sometimes we can look at that data and say, okay, this was just a bad day for this student because we have three other sets of data that says the student does know how to do this and do this well. So this is, oh, the 64, not bad, I didn't remember that, sorry. I built these out a little bit further. So you can see the early literacy and the work that we wanna do. Up on the upper right is kind of the end of year from grade 23, 24 for grade two. And the bottom is the beginning of the year, this is grade three. So we translate this, we use a predictability for iReady to MCAS. So that bottom one for the iReady would kind of say where our grade three students are with grade three standards at the beginning of the year, right? So it's, actually this group looks pretty strong, looking at the green at beginning and beginning grade level. And then you see that next group there. And you can see the difference in our dating, that data trend from 2019 in that early literacy and trying to get that back. So you can see those performance bars and that's why we're having conversations about what can we do to, to reverse that trend and start to get that line graph going up the other way. And that's gonna be with, hopefully, like I said, it's, it's not going to be as easy as we say because we did lose quite a bit of our resources, including the, the paraprofessionals in the kindergarten level. They were built-in interventionists that we had as part of that program, which we cut by over 50% from 23 to 24, no fiscal 24 to 25. We talked about the, the student writing performance and growth. Teachers have bought into this. I've seen some great student learning goals at the high school, especially in the, the ELA with Mr. Nosie. Does a great job working with his department, calibrating scoring and student writing. I've been watching the, the growth in the rubric as far as the, that, where those students are. And then the tiered system of support. We, the schools have done a great job building their own tiered systems of support with the resources that they have. I think there's a responsibility on the district level to be able to allocate resources to where there might be a greater need from time to time than just be building-based. And that's why when you saw like some of that literacy coach work or maybe a district-wide academic interventionist versus each one in each building, to allow us a little bit of flexibility to be able to assign people to where the data says more help might be needed. And then to identify those groups like we talked about. All right, question two. What question two did was it eliminated the MCAS cut score for grade 10 for graduation, for that competency determination for high school students. And the way it changed is graduate high school, but still requires students to complete coursework that meets state standards. So for us, really the way we're responding to that and trying to message to our leaders, to our teachers, to our schools, to our families, MCAS testing's not going anywhere. It's a federal requirement that we test for funds. All that changed was at the end of this year, if somebody didn't hit that cut score for graduation, that student will still graduate as long as they satisfactorily completed the coursework that has been certified by the student's district. We haven't, we haven't received that guidance of exactly what that needs to look like or what that definition is going to be. We have great confidence that our, our program of studies is not gonna be a problem following MasCor and our pathways of learning. So any student that passes our courses through and meets those graduation requirements will get a diploma. We are saying that we value and appreciate the data that we receive from MCAS. We understand the high stakes component for the, the graduation diploma and why that was something that was considered. And it's definitely a much more significant issue across the state than it is in North Reading as we work with all of our students to meet that goal. And we have pretty great success in doing so. And then the other thing that we're just waiting to figure out, it won't be a problem this year because all of these students have a set of data that goes along with them. We might have one or two students who are, you know, still trying to finish one section or whatever that case may be. But they use MCAS performance scores for some of these scholarships that are, are linked in the presentation and also for the seal of biliteracy. So they have to hit a certain target score in the MCAS along with their stamp testing to achieve biliteracy and high distinction. Then just recently, I, I heard a little bit about the, the US News Best Elementary Schools kinda came out and that caused a little bit of questions. And, and none of it's, like, we, we take data for what it's worth, right? We're able to look and analyze and make decisions on, on what we know our schools to be. I just, we just kind of been digging down a little bit through the methodology. We found some things I thought were pretty important just to share. Is they were using 21, 22 data, which is, which is a long time ago, was the first year out of COVID. I mean comparatively, it's the same, right? Like everybody else was the 21, 22 data too, so it's still, there's a story there. But it really doesn't line up to the story that we tell as far as our elementary schools. That year did happen to be inconsistent with our historical progress and success. Just that reminder about where our schools are with accountability and that's how we're compared, how the state compares us. They, the US News kind of use a few simple, they're just using achievement scores, a little bit of teacher to student ratio, if there's ties. A lot about student population and how they weigh this score. If you're more diverse, you can earn more points as far as growth by that subgroup. So just, the state takes a more comprehensive look and definitely more data points as part of that. I think that's it, that's a lot. I go really fast, I'm sorry. Try to be respectful of time.
Thank you very much. Okay, questions, thoughts?
I just, oh, sorry.
Jen raised her hand.
Yeah, you're right. Jen, you can first, I'm rude.
Um, I was just wondering with the early literacy goal and the goal of 10 to 15% increase, what would give you the, the best opportunity to be able to, to meet that goal?
Yeah, thank you for asking that. For us, we've done so much work on intervention, but I will tell you, the real intervention doesn't tend to kick in heavy until that grade one or two. You know, as far as how many data points we get. I think this is one of the things that the science of reading has taught us as well. That part where people say reading is developmental, gives students more time versus attacking. So what we would like to see or what we're trying to do is increase the amount of intervention as early as, as pre-K, K, when students are having a hard time or showing a hard time, coming in not, you know. And the kindergarten standards, we're supposed to be teaching the sounds and the letters, right? We're fortunate in a community, a lot of our students come in with letters and sounds. So then we start to scaffold already as early as kindergarten. So we want these students to get these skills as quickly as it can with the just right amount of support.
Okay, and so that would include meaning of par in each classroom?
Yeah, or whatever the intervention, you know, whatever that could be. Par, reading teacher, interventionist, whatever that would be.
Dr. Daly?
Just to clarify, we had asked for three full-time interventionist teachers to replace our three part-time. And we had, at the end of last year, we had cut the three part-time. So we were down to no.
And that doesn't include the pairs that were cut as well, that were used?
At kindergarten?
Yeah.
So the, the three part-time plus the pairs that were cut in kindergarten?
Well, so the, we were very fortunate in our full-day kindergartens to have full-day.
Yeah.
Paraprofessionals. So it wouldn't be uncommon for interventionists to plan and share some of that work with the paraprofessionals just because we could do more.
Okay.
Right, so they would take kids for 15 minutes, five times a week and work on a specific skill or whatever that might be versus having that one intervention has to, one intervention is having to be in all those places.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, I just, a little more follow-up on the MCAS, just cause it was a good explanation. But did, are, are you gonna, are we getting any impact from that? Was that ever a problem in this district where you weren't able to graduate kids because of not passing MCAS?
I, I, I don't wanna say never. It, it definitely is an issue. Some students need to take the test more than once. That's why we do it in 10th grade, cause they have several times.
Yeah.
And then they have a couple of alternate paths where you get reviewed and sign off of, kind of using that same coursework. And their test scores, if they were really close, to submit for a waiver and they would approve. So yeah, for those students, that's a very real problem. And for those families that they've been in school for, for 13 years and to, to not be recognized, I get where, where they were going with that.
Yeah, as an educator, do you think, North Reading is one district, but do you think other state, like other districts across the straight state, do you think that this was, like, do you think this is gonna serve a purpose, a, a purpose, a positive purpose? Or do you think this is, is, just, I'm asking your opinion, I'm just curious. As an educator, are you taking away a metric that actually could be?
It's a, it's a slippery slope. I have my, like my stronger feelings. I, I appreciate the data, cause it holds a, a standard line there to understand. Once you go back to satisfactory completing whatever that coursework is, and I fully trust our educators and the work that they do and the grades that they assign and things like that, that can differentiate from any school, community through in the state. But in the, the larger part of that, clearly it was an issue statewide that a lot of students weren't achieving their diploma that were putting in their time in that school. And they needed to come up, they need to come up with something better. So even if this just presses pause while they figure that out and we're still able to use the data as we see fit, we'll be fine.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna just jump in on one other point on that. You said some, most students.
You said some, most students were pretty much over, every student was passing eventually, but some were taking it over and over again. With question two's results now, does that mean those students won't be taking that over and over again? They won't have to take it over and over again?
I, yeah, we have to, right?
I I'm just wondering because like.
Well, we haven't, have, yeah.
Definitely.
So we we took the November retest, which was the next day. The timing was incredible. We're going to get guidance on December fifth on what happens next. But again, the EPP plans are in place for those students. So to retake tests or, and in North Reading, it's a handful of students, right? In other districts, it's it's a little bit larger. But those students who are on those plans are taking extra coursework in Math and ELA to get up to the standard that if if anybody looked and saw what that standard is for reading and writing, that is the standard you would want for a kid who graduates high school. So I am concerned that if if students stop taking those courses now and say, I don't need to do this anymore, now they're going to graduate without that level and that's a concern. And some school committees are passing a local standard to require MCAS. I'm not suggesting we do that, but it is, it is happening in some districts.
Is that extra classroom potentially going to disappear?
Right now, the way we're going, we're going to hold ourselves to the same standards and try to help our students achieve at least that threshold. If not, increase more systems to help more students achieve greater.
I'll just say one more thing. I'm much more concerned about students going back to the way of students getting passed through than I am about kids who weren't able to graduate. And that was my concern all along. So, you know, I I had this conversation with my wife about it, you know. Well, they would never just give him a grade and just pass him through. No, they wouldn't because he has to pass MCAS. Oh, no, he doesn't anymore, right? And that's, that's where we were twenty years ago. And so I I hope we don't revert back to that.
That's very interesting. Thank you.
Couple of things. First off, just to start, I appreciate the comment of we don't celebrate the positive enough. I know in my work, it's all weakness-based approach and you look for what's wrong and try and fix it. Comparing ourselves to a lot of those towns, we're, we've got great achievement. So congratulations to everybody involved, up and down the system. That's fantastic. Now I'll talk to the other stuff. For absenteeism, do we see that as sort of a blip that's running through the system? That in theory, over time, once sort of that that COVID blip is out, will revert back? Or do we think that's more of a permanent thing?
It's a, that's a fair question. I want to think of it more of as a blip.
I mean, this is obviously best guess, right?
Right, but my reservation is how quickly the elementary school was able to kind of correct that and get back to the numbers where people were being more cautious about sending their children to school when they were sick or whatever the case may be. And once that trust and understanding of what those protocols and responses at the elementary school corrected itself a lot faster, I'm going to, and we're going to watch pretty closely on what that looks like six to twelve. But we do believe that a lot of the resources that we want and the resources that we want to increase are going to be necessary to work with those students and families to make sure they're getting to school. Because you have to extend more resources and 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 strategies for those families and students to get here, right? Everybody wants their children to be in school. There's a reason why they're not. So figuring that, addressing it and trying to correct it is going to be kind of that next step.
Dr. Daly?
Thank you. As as Mr. Kline mentioned, the Department of Ed gave a grant for this last year. We really focused on this here and across the board. There's really two reasons for the absenteeism in in this district, I'll say. One is, as Mr. Kline talked about, you know, due to COVID and recovery and mental health and all those people. The other piece is families that are taking vacations because parents are working remote now. It changed, it changed everything. So honestly, I think that's part of what helps too is we we directly reached out to families and said, you know, don't do this, your kid's at this place, you know. And I think as more people return to the office, those options are less and less prevalent. But we were having people that would just pull their kids out for two weeks, which that doesn't bring you up to the eighteen, but then if you've got the flu and you've got this and you've got, now all of a sudden you're at eighteen. So we really spent a lot of time looking at data, collecting it. And as students start to approach a certain place, sending home a lot of messages to really keep track of that. And we really did across the board hit our goals. So we're very thankful for that focus and the results.
Do you know how we compare to other, you have your fifteen comparison towns for absenteeism for the high school? Are we, is it similar in other towns?
You know, I didn't do it off of of that. I did.
Those are great. The fifteen towns, they really do feel like similar.
Instead, like it's the same thing almost like with the graduation, like in Fall River, right? Completely different. In twenty two, twenty three, it was like seventy-three percent of their students were chronically absent. And then the next year, they reduced that to fifty-five. So when you talk about a district that size and that number, you see how significant of an issue it was for a larger community like that. So in our growth, I could, I don't know if I can get that from Open Architects yet, but I'll take a look and definitely let you know how we're doing comparatively.
It is be interesting to see, I mean, that's a, to see, I think if the average person realized that, what, thirteen percent of our kids are missing at least a tenth of the school year? That's kind of, I mean, somewhat staggering when you really, really think about it. That's a lot of days to be out of school. That's twice what it was before the pandemic.
Right.
Well, I was just about to say, I think, and I think there's, I'll say correlation rather than causation between the absenteeism and some of the drop in some of the scores as you get into middle school. And I mean, I mean, I can't tell you that, but it just looks at that, looks like that from the data. And so as you get into older grades, the absenteeism looks, at least from a distance, like it's impacting some of these scores, but you know. As I I hadn't thought about the work from home thing, but that makes a ton of sense too. And as companies are starting to say, hey, you've got to come in, that may have impact. The the other thing I I forgot to compliment on is I really like the the connection between iReady and MCAS. That's something that was going through the back of my mind of which is the better predictor? Is one a leading, like, because you do iReady, obviously, at the beginning of the year, it's a leading indicator. I love to see, I love that chart. That's phenomenal. What are you guys getting from that? Like, what are we seeing as, are we taking action based on iReady that then has the potential to impact MCAS? Like, what are we doing with it?
Yeah, we use, we've used a lot of iReady data, especially at the end of the year when we talk about our Acceleration Academies and some of the stuff that we worked and planned there. The MCAS data usually comes in right there over the summer, so, but it's good because it's another set of data. So when you're looking, because right, you can, I can find that many kids to always want to help. But you have to kind of draw your line somewhere, so having double data points is really helpful. And then our goal is to be able to start doing more in September, even before that first diagnostic is taken. Because you already know where the students are, never mind put in regression over the summer, right? Like as far as where that is.
One, again, one last thing. I love that we're sort of data geeks here. And I've said this since being on the school committee with evaluations, just generally, I love that we are data-driven and this is just phenomenal. So so thanks for presenting this. That's great.
Thank you. And I want to say Dr. Daly and I have the the awesome opportunity to meet with the stakeholders at the school, whether it be the principal, the data leaders, their curriculum leaders, and to be able to have those conversations and actually to kind of look at how far we've come over the past ten years in our ability to use data and not be defensive of it, look to discredit it, to be able to use it and make healthy decisions is really impressive. And I think that's one of the other reasons why we're really staying strong to MCAS as well because it's an outside data point that kind of comes to us and then we're allowed to analyze it.
Dr. Daly?
I just want to echo that and thank, you know, Mr. Kline for this work. So this month at our, the past month, my school visits involved, part of that meeting was with the data team at that school. So the principal, assistant principal, curriculum leaders, and, you know, the data leader who's a stipended position. And the conversations that they're having, as to Mr. Freeman's point, are at such a high level. We've come so far. And that, you know, goal that we have of aligning district school goals and then individual educator goals. And that's really, and and everyone sees that's what's driving the success because we we see the data, we 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 set a goal, and then people are so excited. And it used to be looking for my kids and how my kids did. Now it's, did we meet our goals as a school? And because everyone's seeing the responsibility of working with all the students, which is such a shift. It's taken us a long time to get there, but it's, it's really, I'm going to say firing on all cylinders. It's almost there. There's always room for improvement. But it's, those conversations have been, have been wonderful at every single building, so.
It's obvious, it's obvious, just looking at the data, that the messaging from the administration is going right down to the school principals. I'm surprised we didn't see all five of them sitting here today smiling ear to ear because it's obvious it's going right down to the student level. So that's, you know, it's amazing what you guys are able to accomplish. It's, it's, and when you, to me, comparing, I love that chart, comparing to the comparable towns, right? I mean, you know, these towns have great schools as well. To see how well we're performing against those specific towns rather than just similar size. And it's, it's very eye-opening. And it's a testament to how this data-driven approach is working right through the school administration, right into each, in every classroom, teacher. So great job.
I agree. Thank you.
Agreed. Right, I I just have a couple of comments. And so first, thank you for this presentation. Always, always good to see this. And I don't want to parrot what everybody else has already said, so I'll just kind of go to different topics. But the first question is just more, seems like MCAS usually we're looking more at using it at macro level, you know, looking at the whole and not, you know, individuals and, you know, there's some subgroups. But I'm just curious, is it used on individual levels too? Like this one particular student we know has has dropped off a little bit? And is that getting down at the elementary and does it happen also at the middle and the high school?
My answer is going to be yes, more so because of the the subgroups. Because our subgroups are relatively small. If I went back and looked and you saw how many kids in all three to eight were low income, you know, whatever the case may be, working backwards to identify those students and families and coming up with plans that are specific to that. So I would say yes, because to move the target where we are, it's small numbers of students, right? Like if you look at where the data set is, so many are doing well. So by moving small numbers of students, we hit our targets or exceed our targets. Obviously, we want it to be all students and we don't micromanage the data for all students. But as Dr. Daly said, I will say that people are able to look at their data sets and trends and the classes and the courses they teach and use that student data to drive their professional practice goals to try to make a difference there as well. So to be able to say, I might take a subset of group of kids, and I'll use iReady just as an example because it's an easy one, to hit their stretch growth versus their trip, their typical growth, right? Your typical growth is what you would want every student to achieve if they had access to high-quality instruction materials and high-quality instruction. That stretch growth is kind of saying, you're getting a little bit more of a year's work out of these kids, right? Like, so whatever your eight months is, you're getting twelve months out of them. And that's how you kind of remediate the the gap, right? And that's the goal is to not let the gap stretch. Because I think as as students get older and the pace and the rigor increases, it gets a little bit harder for us to slow down and and maintain that scaffolding to keep them in.
Dr. Daly?
Just want to say, so we we have a unified response that we collect. And it started back with Kathy Willis. We've modified it every year. And one of the things we collect is which specific questions did we score the lowest on, right? So we we sort of celebrate the highs and then we talk about the lows. And that gets into the specific exact standards where where we have issues. And then sometimes we look at which students didn't do well on those questions. This is where Mr. Kline said earlier, one of the disappointments this year is they didn't release a lot of the questions because we like to see that, but we do know the standards. And so from a curricular level, we have questions about, well, where is this placed within the year? How much time are we spending on this specific standard? Do we need additional resources? Can we do additional interventions on that? So we get, we do get to that real macro level too. I'm sorry, the micro level also, yeah.
And my other question, I'm not trying to be negative, but I maybe am at times. But it it always seems like the elementary schools always are performing in whatever the data is, ninety-fifth percentile, ninety-eighth percentile, ninety, whatever. I mean, people were upset when, you know, one school was only in the top ten percent, not in the top five percent, you know? But seems like the elementary always are. But we don't always have the same numbers at middle school and high school. And I wonder if there's a reason for that. I mean, is it something where like, maybe the competition where like other, other students maybe don't go to the high school in other districts and they go to different schools? So it's a different group of students in the high school? I'm just curious because it seems like every single year, the elementary schools are always and any testing is always in the nineties. And then middle school and high school don't, don't, I mean, they're, again, they're in the eighties or like, you know, high seventy percentiles. But I'm just curious if there's something there that I'm missing about like different groups, different cohorts, then they get to high school or, I don't know.
It it's something we talk about a lot, you know? We understand that perception that goes along with that. And, you know, I think for me, when I, one of the things I always tell Kathy O'Connell when she asks what we do at the elementary school to, you know, I I always remind her that we have control of the schedule in elementary school classrooms. Like, we will say that a good literacy block is ninety minutes in an elementary school class. And as soon as you get to middle school, your schedule's a lot more defined by how many minutes you have access to that content in that curriculum, which then makes them have to work a little bit harder together to hit all those standards. So I think that that sometimes is one. Two, what we're trying to do is remember always with the middle school too, that they're compared in with the elementaries. So it's, they kind of say that like schools in three to eight and and what that looks like. I don't, they don't show us exactly who's in which ones for the accountability. So I always throw that hesitation out there as well. I think the high school part is a little bit more difficult to understand because there's more indicators that go along with that, from graduation rate, extended engagement, the chronic absenteeism, all that work that comes in to kind of really define to fewer students to make that incremental jump.
And and I also know, I also know that we talk about AP scores a lot. And when you get to high school in particular, looking at testing scores, our, our philosophy has always been to challenge students and not say, only the top twenty students could take these AP course. If there's forty students that want to take it, we can offer two courses, you know? And 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 we can put more people there. So if it comes to test scores, and that's a big piece of it, because elementary doesn't have the same test score. So maybe that's a piece of it as well, that we're challenging people to take higher level courses and maybe the grading isn't as much. But again, it was just a question. Dr. Daly, you have a thought?
Yeah, I just was, you know, we do talk about that at the high school too. And just to keep that focus on what we can do, they're very good and to get to that next level is very hard. The the window for opportunity to improve is is small. But we, the conversation we had at the high school is really about their dark, the dark comparisons, right? And just looking to see what's working well in other places and what could we maybe do differently, right? And that's the ongoing conversation. And it's a harder one to have when you're doing really well. If your, if your scores are a little bit lower, then it's, there's more motivation for that. So for us, it's sort of celebrating, but also how can we continue to improve? You know, and we really do focus on allowing students to challenge and on the whole student. So we don't, we don't compromise that. We don't have, you know, a schedule that requires them to double up on X, Y, Z just for the scores. We allow them to take more electives and those things. So the end of the day, those are the things that we think about. Like if we, you know, if we, if we had, every student had to take, you know, two ELA blocks every day, you'd probably have higher scores, but you'd be missing out on a lot too. So it's a balance. We talk about that a lot. But I think there are things we can do to continue to move forward and we certainly have a a vision for that at the high school.
Perfect example at both buildings too. Like, we haven't gotten to that point where they've, they've actually asked, once they heard about how the elementary schools were using the academic interventionists, you know, why can't we have access? Like Kathy O'Connell was quick to say, you know, what that could look like because she could figure out which reflects and different things to to provide more more support to students. At the high school, we're still working on a lot of MTSS stuff that will help us reach more students.
Anybody else have any thoughts, comments, questions? Okay, appreciate the conversation, Mr. Kline. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're going to get into policy. We have a policy for first reading, KDCB. Policy's up, you want to lead us on that?
We'd love to.
Go ahead.
Okay, so it's first reading for potential new policy, KDCB. So this policy does not currently exist, so it'll be added to the policy index. This is really driving towards the overall presence of the web for both the district and the school committee. So this is modeled after the MASC guidelines and policy and going through to ensure that both the district websites and any potential school committee, social media is compliant with legal and open meeting law. So we can go through and we can, I forget how we do this now. Do we, are we rea- are we actually going through reading or?
You don't have to read the whole thing, no.
All right, good, because I really didn't want to.
Why don't we, why don't we, why don't we take a motion, have a second and then we'll have a discussion on it? So do you want to make a motion to accept it for a first reading?
Sure. I move to accept policy KDCB, district website and social media, first reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a second, any discussion? So the only, the only main question, well, I have a few things, but the main question I had about the one through five that might be misting, missing. We talked about also making sure that we tell people in advance of meetings coming. And so we didn't specifically put about like postings of future meetings. And I wonder if that, and, and it could, it could be just, you know, number two, it could be expanded to be both, you know, future and past. But if there's something that is posted, you know, a posted meeting, even if just sharing the agenda or saying, you know, this is, you know, this is posted as a discussion topic, just in case people want to come. Like there's a budget hearing coming up and so that's one thing that I thought was maybe missing there.
Oh, like so looking forward.
Looking forward, so like, like for tonight, like if we were going to be talking about, like I said, the budget hearings coming up, being able to say, you know, put a posting out there that says tonight, you know, this is the agenda or whatever, tonight that we're going to be, the school committee is going to be discussing or having a budget hearing.
So I think that was the intent of number five. So maybe we just need to,
Oh, yeah.
If we want to be more,
Add school committee.
Yeah, we wrote as public meetings just for,
I, yeah, I, I was only thinking about like, like, like sporting events or things like that as opposed to like posted meetings, but,
We could put, we could add the, that was really to make sure we covered if there was a joint meeting or a select board meeting or a, any public meeting that may be of interest that would be related to the schools.
And the only, the only other thought after our discussion in the last meeting was, do we avoid any of this by having like a third-party post this stuff? Like a student rep or, you know, somebody like, I know, I know the transcript has used students to do some of the writing for the transcript, you know, about events happening in, in the town. I don't know if, again, I think it gets away from the purpose of the student success and maybe it's not what we want to do, but I just know that was something that could come up.
Yeah, I think if we were limiting, limiting to just calendar events, it would be easier for a student rep to do that. But I think we, the intent is to go a step beyond that. And I think that would be hard for a student rep to, to narrow down. Yeah.
Yeah.
And also we want to be making the decision, right, like to let someone else do that.
Yep. And then did we want, somebody had said the last discuss, when we had the discussion in the last meeting, somebody had mentioned maybe at the end of the meeting even, you know, taking a vote or having a conversation specifically about what we were going to be, what we wanted the, the people to post from that meeting? Is that something we should do as like a standing?
Yes, we talked about putting it as a routine.
Uh, having a standing, a standing thing like here's what we should be putting out there from this meeting or whatever, just so that we're in open session, talking about it and saying, this is what we would like to do.
Isn't that on the agenda tonight?
Yeah, okay. But then that would,
But putting it as part of, as part of routine business, right? So if there's nothing to talk about, then we pass, you know, pass over as part of the, that, that would seem to make sense.
I put it on the regular agenda tonight because it's not yet approved policy. And then after the next meeting, so in January, it would go on the routine matters if we agree.
Okay.
And in terms of administering the, and maintaining the page, I assume here where it says, you know, the North Reading School Committee, it, that is, when you become a member of a certain subcommittee, it then become, like who is the person who is in charge of the posting? Is it going to be those two committee members or if there's a subcommittee and is that, so is that, that's a subcommittee duty would be posting?
Yeah, I think we agreed not to have a so- social media subcommittee, that it's just part of the policy committee, right?
Policy, okay.
So we agreed?
I don't know if we've agreed to anything, yeah.
Oh, yeah. So I guess that's what we discussed.
Well, I, I, I thought that the, the, the sub, the subcommittee to discuss social media was part of the policy, but I didn't know, moving forward, is that going to be a policy? Is that going to be a policy position or is there going to be like a communication subcommittee or something like that?
That's a good question, Noel, because I think, so we moved away from that at policy subcommittee based on the discussion that we had here. And the real takeaway was, we thought what would be the most comfortable for the school committee was to really limit it to items one to five. So basically, if it's come up at, at a school committee meeting, anything that, so basically anything that, that Mr. Colleen just presented today would be fair and open game to then go post on social media to help scope it to what's happened, right, in the past as opposed to before looking. That really eliminated the need to have a separate like subcommittee that would then go create information.
Okay, what about a role?
So now the question is, that's,
Is it a secretary? Is it, is it a newly developed role?
It's a great thing for discussion because I think that's something that we definitely, I don't know if we want to put it in policy or if you want to put it in procedure. And that's where you draw the line of like sometimes you keep that stuff in procedure. Because you may want to change the procedure and not want two readings to do it in the future. So that's, I mean, certainly open for discussion.
You'd almost need like a hierarchy of access too.
Right.
Like, I mean, you, you get where I'm going on that. Of like, the, the people assigned, person or persons assigned to doing this work aren't around, what happens?
Yeah.
But I think this is a good outline slash foundation. I mean, I'm not as worried about that type of thing of who's specifically doing it as I am more about what you guys were addressing, which is really the structure of it all, which I think is a good, is a good first take on it. I think this looks pretty good.
Yeah, but Noel, I get why you're worried about that because it is, social media is the, you know, public facing. So everyone has to be comfortable with it.
Well, and also it's a, it's an, it's an added responsibility. So somebody has to, you know, go and do it. And then again, that person steps down from the school committee and then who's going to, like, i- if it's a consistent, consistent role. And, and also, um, but again, there's no, there's no need, need to monitor it because it, there's no commenting or anything. Okay, because that's when the real fun begins.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So we're discussing,
And that's crystal clear by MASC, right? There's no, everything is disabled comments. Now it can be shared across the world and then who knows what happens after it there. But any post on any, that, that is the rule, so that way we don't have any open meeting law concerns.
Right.
So there will be posted, you're allowed to have a comment and it's in here where you, it'll post, you can post the next school committee meeting and then turn off comments. So essentially we have a boilerplate. The next school committee meeting is on this date or this is when it was discussed as a reference point and then that's it, because there's no comment thing.
And, and sorry, just to drill down a little bit more on this. Um, the, you know, okay, it can be shared, right? So say it's shared. Is there, is there any need to have policy on what happens to a shared post? If a shared post for some reason creates 100 comments on a community connection or something like that, is there any responsibility of the school committee, once it is left, once it's become shared? Is that, it's out of our hands, like ignore it? Or is then, uh, individual member of the school committee, if they're commenting on it? Like, you know, I know Scott has entered the waters before.
Enter twice.
Um, do you then, like if he's commenting on a shared school committee policy, is he commenting as a?
Well, do you have to worry about open meeting law if more than one person?
Yeah, I'm just sort of like, because just I, uh, social media is the reason why it is such, uh, you know, needs so much discussion around it is because it, it has its own life, you know? As we see, the amount of things that can come out of nothing are really amazing. So anyways, that's just a question on policy.
Yeah, Dr. Daly?
I, I would limit it to two and maybe one person that's in charge. And I would be concerned with an individual commenting and trying to explain, speaking on behalf of the whole board to explain it. So I, I don't know, if it's out there, it's out there and then.
I mean, I almost like feel like, would that be valuable to have in the policy to say like it, there, this is, it's put out into the public, but individual school committee members should not continue to comment on it, you know, when it takes on its own.
Well, I think that's hard though, because if there's something, you know, when you've entered the waters before, it's because there's misinformation, right? Or, or something, someone is perceiving something wrong. So to then, you know, just let that go out there, then, no, it's hard.
I, I think, so I think, I think we raised a few different points. The first is who's going to do this, but I think we're voting on the policy of what we want to happen. And then we'll talk about who carries out the policy later.
In the policy.
I don't know that, I don't, because I think the concern is if you change that, like, I think you can change roles and I don't know who, who the person is. And so I think, like just saying what the policy is, we want to abide by first. And then the next step would be talking about who's going to carry out this policy, whether it is a policy. Because we're then saying we want this to happen. Now we have to talk about how we're going to make that happen. I think the general comment about commenting on posts, whether it's shared or whatever, I think it just falls into abiding by open meeting law and making sure that we do that. And, and again, I mean, just e- even, even making sure that, you know, somebody liking, like three of us not liking the same thing is, you know, is, is something we have to make sure of, so.
I would never like anything that you like.
Do what I do, just completely ignore social media.
Um, okay, so, so we have this, my, my only last question on this one for the policy subcommittee is, you said this is modeled off of the MASC? Is it, is this sort of like word for word from this or did you kind of add your own?
It doesn't go to nearly that level of detail for social media. So, right, but we wanted to ensure that all the components of open meeting law, the restriction of comment, really, so everything, nothing was taken out from MASC and it's now, it was further expanded by the subcommittee. Really, it was really focused on the discussion that we had, items one through five, right? That was the, what we felt was the meat of the discussion from the last, you know, our last public meeting, right? So really trying to document the, the scope of what was allowed to be posted. I know there's a lot of concern from the committee about, you know, formulating new opinions outside of a meeting. And I think this really locks this into what's happened at a school, a public or, right? And then a number one there, or something that's come from the administration publicly anyways, right? So something that's come over Blackboard or come over from, from district administration.
And my only very nerdy comment is, one, two, three and four have no periods or commas and five has a period.
I noticed that.
I think it should be either commas and then a period at the end or no periods or something, so. That's my only, that's my only.
If that's the only comment from you, actually, we'll take that as a win.
I know.
You should do that, just you have something to say.
With that?
We do that on purpose.
We wanted to give you all the proof.
And to let the lawyers get their say.
Both lawyers recognized it, so. Um, okay, do we have a motion? We have a second, any further discussion? For all those in favor of the policy?
Right.
Opposed? Uh, unanimous. Thank you very much, policy subcommittee.
Great work on this, by the way.
Yeah.
Uh, school committee professional development goal.
I feel like you have something.
Oh, this was me.
This is you.
Okay, so, um, this is a, no, no vote or anything for today's meeting, um, but I reached out to,
Well, just, just to kind of back it up for one second. So one of the school committee goals is to try to have a profession, is to work on professional development and to reach out to MASC or somebody about a speaking presentation. And so you were following up on that goal.
Correct, yeah. So for, as part of that goal, uh, reached out to MASC, uh, to our field rep. Really for this meeting, so Alicia's willing, uh, she's willing to come to North Reading to do a training, uh, with the school committee on any topic that we would deem of interest. She was looking for dates and any particular topics that this school committee would find of the most interest. I kind of gave her background on how long people have been in the roles, um, you know, the district in itself, um, areas of, of interest that, that, you know, a, a school committee of our composition would, you know, where it would make sense. So I don't know if there's any specific topics that you'd like us to bring back to Alicia for potential? You know, is there one or two? Are we looking for a Saturday? Are we looking for a weeknight? You know, what, what, what are, basically to go back and, and talk about potential dates and, and locations and topics of interest.
And, and just two questions. Number one, we had talked before about doing it for our committee, but, uh, you know, opening up to other people as well? Is that the thought as well to?
We absolutely can and there's no, there's no restriction. We, so we can certainly open it up to, um, it's, it's, it's part of our dues to MASC, so she's willing to, also, I can find out on total headcount with the, if there's a limit, but I'm not sure there would be.
So it'd be just like going to like the MASC, you know, annual conference or something? You can all, all go there, okay? So yeah, I think we should, just to try to get through them. Because are we thinking about this room as the venue, I'm guessing?
I would, that, that would seem to meet the most sense.
Okay.
Did she have any suggested topics that she thought were of value?
So the, I mean, the one that we discussed briefly was special education, given all of the emphasis and that we've heard about all the increases in budgets for special education. That would probably be really good going into what's probably going to be another difficult budget season, understanding the increases in special education costs. Making, you know, having that information readily available to us would be one that we are kind of bouncing back as a potential topic, but again, that's just me.
Yeah, and, and I think overall the role of the school committee in that because, like for example, Cynthia Conan, it's not a direct hire by us, but it's one of the positions that we have a role in hiring, if I, if I recall. And so it, um, it's just talking about the role of the school committee when it comes to special education. And, and I would even expand beyond like for out-of-district placements and things like that as well.
Right.
And talking about collaboratives more generally, sort of what they're for. Like we've always been in the same collaboratives, but we've never really investigated, are there other collaboratives out there? I don't know. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an interesting topic to me. Anybody have other thoughts, topics? We were just talking about social media.
Yeah, I was wondering that, yeah.
Just, just a question, through your exploration, was there a cost to any of these workshops?
No, she said it as part of our,
Membership?
Membership, yeah.
Yeah. Like what, what role does the, should the school committee play in social media? School committee being the voice, but also, it's a prevalent topic from elementary school to high school right now, what's going on inside the schools.
What are other towns doing? How are they succeeding or failing?
I, I mean, I will also say that I went to, with Dr. Daly, to a presentation. We sadly see a bunch of strikes going on around here right now. We went to a convers- we went to a presentation on that and they were very hawkish about, you should be out, the school committee should be out there talking about things. And we were both sort of of, of the opinion, maybe we shouldn't be.
What do you, what does that mean? Like, what type of things as in what things?
Like with negotiations, getting out there and trying to like hire people to be out there talking about the negotiations and,
This is what the MASC was saying?
This is, what, what was the group that was presenting at that? Do you remember, it was, it was a law firm. Remember that, do you remember the, uh, do you remember what I'm talking about? We went to the luncheon.
Remember last year?
Yes, last year, but they were,
The, the, the school counselor, I thought you meant the one we just had.
No.
The school counselors, um, I'm sorry, the school, the school, um, council,
Yes.
Association.
It was lawyers for, yeah, and, and they were, they were basically saying like, school committees should be out there arguing their positions and things like that and so. Yes, and.
You can see by my, my reaction, I,
Correct, which is why I don't know if we want to spend the whole training if we disagree with the approach that some people might have, I don't know.
Well, I, look, I mean, we haven't done this before with this person. So I think, yeah, yeah, there's a potential that it may not be as optimal as we want it to be. But I still think it's a good opportunity and we should take advantage of it.
Oh, I think we should do something. I mean, I, I, I'm just thinking like, maybe we start with like special education more like less, less opinion about, because I think social media is more, there's going to be opinion about what you should or shouldn't do. Whereas I think if this is more geared to like a factual, like let's make sure we understand more what it is, um.
I would certainly be more interested, or not more interested, but interested in seeing the, um, you know, learning about what our role as school committee is when it comes to special education out of district. That's always seems to come up.
And, and what other school committees do to try to manage these costs? Because we're not the only community having these issues and,
Yeah, I, no, I think it's a great topic. Social media was in addition to, not instead of.
No, no, I know. And I, I, I don't know if the same person would present on both though. I don't know. Yeah, we could ask and see what the options are for there. Any other topics that, I mean, when we originally, when we originally put this on our, our goals that we never, we haven't done a good job of accomplishing was just overall the, the role of the school committee when, you know, it, it was just talking about broader like, you know, state makes this rule, what's the school committee role in that and things like that. But I, I think, I think special education is a more, and budgetary issues is a, is a more pressing issue right now. So I think that's a good one.
I mean, if we determine, determine that training is useful and, and makes a lot of sense, then I'm sure we could, we could work out, you know, to your point, some of the good trainings that would maybe dip our toe further in the pool. I mean, I will say that the newest charter in the course, the one that I attended, September, or whatever that was, um, they did have like a 30-minute social media block in the latest one where they talk about just that open meeting law and your responsibility as a school committee member. So I'm sure that they're still gathering top, that information. I, I think that's still a, they're very much in the learn, the storming phase of that because I think it's such a new area. And looking through at most districts for social media, right, having most of those policies online, some have nothing, some have subcommittees, there, it's a wide, I'm not sure that we would get specifically what we were looking for because I think it's just so vast right now that there, there's really no, um, best practice as of yet. But I could be wrong.
Yeah. Was it, was it how to become a TikTok, TikTok star from, uh, your school committee role?
Right.
Okay, so, I appreciate, any other comments or thoughts on the goal?
Would it, would a week, like?
Oh, we want to talk about time.
Yeah, like, yeah, just so we're not trying to do this offline. I mean, it's like on a non-Monday night, on a non-school committee night, that's already.
How long is it?
We could, they, she said, we can, she can, we can tailor, we can do, we, we can do remote, um, we can do in-person, we can do, what, what, whatever format would suit the, the committee the best.
It's up to us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like the idea of.
Doing however.
Of an off, off Monday perhaps, because.
Yeah, an evening, yeah, as opposed to.
I think weekend would be hard.
Yeah, I think weekend would be harder.
And having it be, if she's traveling too, it might be better for her to be virtual. We could also do it here.
Yeah.
Yeah, evenings are fun.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, probably not Friday night, not Monday night, so probably Tuesday through Thursday.
The devil will be in the details, it depend, depends on the week, depends on the day.
Right.
No, I think you don't say an off Monday, though.
An off Monday?
Oh, um, no, we have to go to the select board meetings on off Monday, so.
We do.
I would think, I would, I would think Tuesday through Thursday, but I guess it could be, it could be the alternate Monday too.
Is there a preferred day of the week? How about we do that and then?
Well, the other thing we could do is, could we do five-thirty, like right before the meeting? Or that might just get, we know, we know we're all available?
Yeah.
Too long?
No, no, I just don't know that I'm always, like.
If we want to invite other committees.
Like I said, if, if we can plan for, for, in advance, I can clear it out.
So, we're open.
Okay, sounds like not weekends.
Okay, not weekends.
Not weekends on Friday nights.
With, with advance notice, with advance notice, so.
Lot to go on, lot to go on, we got it, we'll get it.
Maybe get a couple of dates for more?
Oh, we'll get more than a couple, just see. I know we got a million commitments on the, no, but, all right, so not weekends and we'll, we'll shoot for a, a weeknight.
Is it, is it in-person, you think, or?
While, while we can see what the, I mean, I could just kind of see what her feel is on what's the most effective use. I mean, I think the remote can be off-putting sometimes, depending on what the topic is. So I think in terms of face-to-face, it's more, more.
I would prefer in-person just because we, then, then there can be more interaction and.
Right.
I don't know.
Especially if this is going to be the first of hopefully what could be a series of, of professional learning every year, if that might make sense.
Okay. Thank you, Tim, for bringing that forward. Next thing we have is the Field Naming Committee. Dr. Daly, do you want to lead us in the discussion here?
Sure, I just wanted to give an update on, um, this process. I've actually made a few changes since Athletic Subcommittee, but we discussed at Athletic Subcommittee, we discussed at our last meeting that the Athletic Subcommittee and the two school committee members would, uh, be a part of this from Athletic Subcommittee. I'm going to send this out to the community. Uh, a change that I, I made was to have one form that differentiates, so someone could choose to be on the committee, they could choose to nominate, or they could do both. So I'm going to just do it in one sort of process. But I would send something out with the link to the form. Uh, it calls for, you know, a nine-member committee that includes, um, officials from the town, faculty, staff, current former students of the school system, residents of the community. I am naming that it, the two fields to be named would be the softball field and the multipurpose field behind the football field. So hopefully then people that are hearing those of the two involved might want to be involved, former softball players, coaches, um, football, whatever, um, interest is, is selected. I would then bring those, uh, names to the, to members of the Athletic Subcommittee and we would formulate a small group. Our goal would be, um, the deadline for consideration would be January seventeenth. We then would have a public hearing on February tenth, which I believe is at one of our scheduled meetings. And from there, we would then, um, make a decision soon thereafter, because this does need to go to the town, um, to go to town meeting, um, for final approval. So that's sort of the timeline, I just wanted to show everyone here and then I would send that out probably tomorrow, um, to start getting some interest for this, uh, committee.
Do you, my, my only questions are, should this, should we see if the transcript could also publish this and?
They will.
Maybe even ask the town administrator if he wants to send it out more broadly, just to hit different people for the committee?
Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
Like, again, it, it doesn't have to be school age children, it could be a lot of people. I mean, some of the people that are being named as nominated don't have kids in the schools anymore, but they were active.
Yes.
You know, contributors to the school system when their kids were here, so.
I did speak with the transcript tonight about this, just going in. It won't go in, um, this week obviously, but it would go in the next week.
Okay.
So I have a random question about this.
Yes.
How much does it cost to put up a sign? Because I assume once we name it, we're going to put up a sign with that person's name.
Yeah.
And I don't want to get into a thing on this, it's just, just out of curiosity, like, we've got three names going up. Roughly, what do we think the cost is? And if we don't have it, that's fine, we can, we can talk to, we can talk it through some other time.
Yeah, I think there's all different types of signs.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, right, right, right.
You know, part of the policy that's out there is the nominating person would be responsible for the cost associated with that.
Oh, I didn't see that, okay.
And I don't think that was necessarily clear to the person who dominated, so I, I would, I, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily put it on that person either. I think there would be efforts to fundraise, um, you know, from different groups in town.
Nominating person gets a bill all of a sudden.
Yields and nominations, yeah. I think this person was sort of a, a point person that kept asking me about it on behalf of many people talking. And so I'm not going to hold that person to it, but I think that's what the committee should discuss. But it can be, it can be expensive if we're talking about quite a large sign, um, you know, for different areas. But then it's also just the naming rights, um, and the, you know, having the, uh, the plaque up there. And, and it will be referred to as that, like, we do, you know, reference our fields that way and it's, it is quite an honor, so.
No, no, it's great.
Important to hear from all voices, but great question, yeah.
Friedman Field has a great ring.
We don't, we don't need any vote on this one. Um, social, uh, school committee, social media presence, continuation of what we were just talking about.
So, yes, I put this on here just as a, you know, we could talk about whether we would add it to the standing, uh, you know, you know, routine matters. And then if people wanted to discuss, you know, examples of things that could go on there tonight, just so we understand why that would be worth having as a routine matter, but.
Yeah, I, I would think that it should be on as, as, like, the last thing on the agenda. And then in terms of who did it, I think we should probably discuss at some point too. I heard it's the role of the secretary, secretary, it could be like an assignment, like a subcommittee assignment, um, I don't know. We can talk about that after it actually passes, I suppose, huh?
Yeah. And in terms of what would be shared, like, it's sort of, that's just another question of, like, do you almost like repeat the agenda? Like, this is, this is what was covered and, like, how, how is decided what is shared?
I think what might, what maybe would be helpful is when we do the second reading, next meeting, maybe Jen and I can bring examples of taking stuff from this meeting and what it would look like on social media.
Yeah, well, well, so just try to think this through, I have two examples, one I haven't talked about yet, just like an update from the, um, Substance Abuse Policy Committee I went to today. They were talking about how Lieutenant Lucci is a cyber expert and that a lot of towns actually don't have a cyber expert and we're lucky enough to have one, and that he puts out, um, offers a lot of presentations for parents and they've had to cancel a lot of them because parents don't, they don't have enough people. So putting the dates of those things might be something of a future meeting. Um, that actually isn't actually a school committee, but something that I think would be important for people to hear. And then, for example, another one, when I asked the question about the early literacy goal, maybe that's good for parents to know that we are trying to increase that, or parents, the whole community, ten to fifteen percent. And this is what would be needed to do that, or optimal to do that. I think the first one is more straightforward, obviously the second one might need some discussion, but those are two examples that I was thinking of. Tim, are you, were you thinking of similar?
Yeah, I mean, really it was based on the discussion we had last time. If we look at the last year of all the just extremely useful information that just wasn't getting out to the community, that was, you know, the hun, hundred and whatever page budget document that's got amazing information in there that just wasn't seen. So being able to summarize that in consumable chunks and then referencing back to it. So, you know, the, the concept, or at least what's going through my head, which we can bring examples to the next meeting, are, there are several tool type things, one of them is called Canva, where you can take like a data and then just put it, it just puts it in a simple graphic that says, you know, did you know? And then you, you put the piece of data, whatever it is, right? North Reading scored one of fifteen with these comparable districts, whatever it is. And then you can point back to the presentation that Mr. Colleen just gave an hour, well, half an hour ago.
I mean, we can have a template.
Right, right. Uh, and that, that's kind of the, so basically to get that, get somebody's eye on it, to then actually get them to click on the link and then see all that information. I think a lot of the struggle that, over the last year, was there is a wealth of information online, but people had no idea where to begin looking and why it mattered. Uh, and to be able to get that, that, oh, that digestible piece, that TikTok highlight, Scott, that you just referred to, right? To then get them to click on that presentation and scroll through it and go, oh, this is interesting. Um, that, I think that connectivity wasn't there. And we saw that with the attendance to the public meetings that we had, right? Best case scenario, you maybe had thirty people in here, right? You know, ideally, if you can get a thousand, two thousand people clicking on that and at least getting some concept of what's going on, um, I think that's beneficial for everybody.
This is going to be terrible to say, but, I mean, this is where things like Gen A I and, uh, and Gemini and some of those other things, just to do summarizations of, uh, I mean, I'm not saying we do that, I'm not.
That might be a bridge far for the first one, but it's something that you can put at.
I mean, having played around with some of those tools.
Right.
We're sort of doing that on our own.
Right.
We're, we're taking lots of information and distilling it into something that's more manageable chunk. Again, I'm not suggesting it, but it's sort of.
Yeah, because depending on what you're, what you're asking, it becomes, you know, maybe, it becomes a significant task for somebody.
Well, I, I, I don't think the point was, I, to regurgitate the whole.
No, no, no.
The whole meeting.
Right, right.
Right, no, but it like, to summarize, for example, the, the budget, like, that's, you know, in a way that's, you know, using templates or Canva or something, all of a sudden you're like, oh my God, I'm doing a couple hours worth of work.
Yeah, I think, I think what the routine matter would be, all right, so what are those data points that we want to get out into the community? So like, for instance, we'll, we'll pick an example from last year. Did you know the average spending per student in North Reading is X and the state average is Y? Right, right in that report, the, that was, we reviewed every week, right, at school committee, every other week at school committee meeting, but people had to go to page ninety-four in that PDF to go find it, right? That would then prompt hopefully a click into that document that's got a, just a wealth of information that people can become more educated on, the schools, the school budget, where we are, placement, even things like tonight, to be able to link back to this presentation. Did you know that all three elementary schools were ra, rated in the ninety-fifth percentile or greater in accountability rating? Click on this link and then they can see this presentation.
Yeah, so I think.
It gives, engage, the engagement is really, I think, what it would drive.
I think it would only take a couple of minutes, right? Because I think that, I think the, the hardest part would be part of the routine matters, discussing what we want on. And then if we say we want two posts before the next school committee meeting, you know, putting up the post in an easily digestible chunk would only take a little bit of time.
Yes, Dr. Daly.
I would also keep it, be selective in what goes out. Like, I think it's important, but, um, make sure they're ones people pay attention to.
You get, you get like three bullets at most and then.
Yeah.
You've lost your audience.
It'd be fun.
And we send out, then if, you know, I send out my blasts to people, but if it's two or three clicks, I think that's what you're saying, is just get it on the first click directly to people that are only looking in one place. And for years, we've always said, we want them to go through these channels, because we don't want them to just get a little piece of it, we want them to get the full story. But I can see the world's changing, right? And people like to get little snippets and they think that's, that's the whole story. It, it's a little dangerous, because then the conversation becomes about the snippet, not about the whole. So make sure it's always linked back to something larger, that then somebody hopefully in the thread will say, well, if you watch the full video that Mr. Connelly talks for an hour and a half about, explains X, Y, Z, that's what you want to make sure people are doing and not getting caught up on misunderstanding of minutia, so.
Honestly, I think this is, I, I actually think this is exciting.
No, I think it's probably needed, it's just, like, just trying to make sure it's clear for, like, I'm also thinking of, like, we have this group of people sitting here, but like ten years in the future, like, who's going to be sitting here? And who's going to be in charge of making, like, making this something that's reproducible by whatever committee members, you know, taking on the role?
Well, maybe that's why too, because not everyone is comfortable or savvy with social media, right? Um, so maybe it could depend, it could, it could change, doesn't have to be necessarily this position.
Right.
Good discussion. Good discussion, initial foray. Okay, routine matters, who wants to lead us in minutes?
I can do that. Move to approve the, um, minutes for open session held on October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four, as written.
Second. Do we have a motion, do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, unanimous? That's all? Budget update, is Mr. Connelly on?
Yes.
Mr. Connelly, do you want to leave, lead us in the budget update?
Yes, I will, am I ready?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. So the November budget report, worthy for that, it, um, this summarizes financial activity through the middle of November. Certainly as we get ready to move through the first five months of the fiscal year, I think although we certainly have some, some challenges and some unanticipated expenses, uh, I do think, as you can see by the report, I think we're still in pretty solid financial standing to, um, progress into the second half of the fiscal year. There's still some, some areas to, to be wary of and to pay close attention to, but I think we've kind of weathered the, the unexpected, anticipated expenses that came up in the first quarter of the year. So as we discussed at the last meeting, you know, we certainly saw several unanticipated special education, higher district costs, the tuition and transportation that arose sort of after the budget adoption, sort of late, late June into the summer. Certainly with the town meeting action, the additional appropriation that we received in the October town meeting, that has helped bring the budget back into balance. And that was certainly a very, um, I think much needed, you know, fiscal year starting post of action at that, at that time. Uh, there's certainly, as we discussed and as I continue to meet with Cynthia Conan, the Director of Student Services, you know, a, a chance for some potential additional, um, higher district placement costs and additional cost arising in this area for the tuition and transportation, so, uh, we're going to have to just continue to put, pay very close attention to this, you know, budget cost center, um, as these are, this is obviously a new budget, um, the most kind of volatile, um, ever-changing, uh, you know, lineup and that is, in some cases, you know, out of, out of our control. So we'll certainly be paying close attention, but I do think we have kind of weathered the, the early, kind of unanticipated storming sense that arose in the first quarter of the fiscal year. So we are, you know, continuing to gather more information on, you know, what these lineups would look like, uh, but we'll, as I said, we're paying close attention to it. There's other anticipated maintenance expenses that have, have risen, but we've been able to address this in the budget, uh, and that is typically the case with, with seeing that occur. There are balances in the instructional expense accounts, in the technologies, supplies, in the professional development. So we are, again, we're just being very kind of vigilant, conservative with the spending, not really putting out hard freezes on any of the budget lines at this point, but we are just, uh, reviewing everything to the soft freeze in a sense, just making sure we're, we're purchasing anything that is very much needed, uh, at this point in the, in the fiscal year. Uh, most payroll accounts are within the budget of the month, as you can see on the report. We're certainly monitoring the impact of the levers instances, but that review, the substitute budget and other changes as we move through the fiscal year, like, all lines are within the budget. Foodservice program is performing very, very well through the start of this fiscal year. We're certainly seeing over seventy percent of students take part in the school meals program. Uh, we're seeing an increase in the art of card sales, which is, which is a positive thing. And the expanded breakfast program that includes not just all students at all levels, in particularly the elementary level, not just the preschool children, who needs strong participation at the elementary level in this program, which is somewhat of a, a beginning pilot program. So we continue to make tweaks and get feedback and addressing feedback from, um, parents and, you know, with the foodservice program and the foodservice director. But I, we've certainly seen an increase and there's certainly a need for it, which is great. And we're certainly seeing an increase in our state, sort of revenue as a result. So we'll continue to watch that. Uh, but I think currently, I think we're in solid financial standing, I think there's areas of, uh, monetary that's a need in special education, transportation costs in particular, but I think as we approach, um, sort of the end of the first half of the year, into the final month of the second quarter, um, we seem to be okay right now. So, I guess I will put out to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Connelly, any questions? My, my only question, Mike, is, um, on the, on the lunches, you mentioned that breakfast, breakfast is, is getting enrollment, which is great. I know that from a budgetary standpoint, when the final budget was approved, I believe they didn't fund the school lunches. They put it, they, they cut the amount in there. Do we still think that's going to be sufficient to cover the lunches for the entirety of the school year?
Yeah, everything I've heard at the legislative level, at the state level, in conversations with D E C, um, they are doing the industry review, we did get shows in for industry review, which will be later, uh, winter, uh, this year, is that. Uh, this year, is that they anticipate the additional, um, you know, supplemental um budget, which is similar to what occurred last year, that we'll fund that, we'll fund. We need the free meals for the end of the school year, so we, everything I've heard looks positive in that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Is there, I mean, the the special education is obviously concerning up to forty-five, right? I think the budget was thirty-five?
Did we have thirty-eight last?
Forty, forty, okay.
I think we had thirty-eight last year and we budgeted forty to be conservative.
But we think there's more, I mean, is this something that maybe a topic we should bring up and discuss? I'm concerned that, are we are we saying forty-five and then potential for more, are we talking we could be at fifty? And we're like, I mean, we're we're seeing growth here, right? And how can we get ahead of that? Or is there a way we can get ahead of that growth?
More for this year and possibly we're thinking for next year. We do have stabilization funds if if needed, which we haven't had to tap into. The other piece too, Michael, do you want to speak to the transportation part or just that question that's out there? At the state level?
With circuit breaker?
Yeah, just so it's on people's radar.
The state way is happening, which could have an impact for us officially at two thousand fifteen, I'm sorry, officially at twenty twenty-six budget. Um, is they are looking at potentially reducing the amount that was initially intended to be funded for transportation, special education, transportation costs. So that, a little bit of history that was added into the circuit breaker formula a few years ago, that was gonna be a phasing. That was intended to get districts to um one hundred percent funding by twenty twenty-five, that it would slow down somewhat, and then the acceleration after COVID. Uh, coming out of COVID, so we were supposed to be, this was supposed to be about a hundred percent year, and that was what they initially informed. Communities on their initial claims back in the summer that to expect a hundred percent of the transportation, because I'm not talking to tuition, tuition was always less than seventy-five percent. So they are now kind of backdroping, saying that they may not be able to do the one hundred percent, there's a lot of legislative action between the different associations, I believe. I believe that I see as a part of that, and I assess, and as well, the different state reps, and I'm just, today's our own care to advocate that that be increased, that they they continue to support that. Uh, we could potentially see impact, we're around with a hundred thousand dollars, um, that would impact next year's offset. Uh, but the latest I heard recently, they're hopeful that that might be at least at seventy-five percent, which I think will even lessen the impact for us. Um. So this is something we have to watch, again, this is this is next year's offset.
So we're just advocating to get at least a seventy-five, as the actuals come in, they drop the percentage down, right? So we're trying to talk about what the, so for a district like ours, it's at least a hundred thousand dollars, just just for transportation, just that piece of it.
And 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 just to clarify for people that don't know, the um, the circuit breaker for, you you mentioned seventy-five percent for the tuition. That's after three times the average cost.
Yes.
So so if the average cost to educate a student is ten is twenty thousand dollars, the district has to pay the first sixty thousand and then twenty-five percent above that. And then the the seventy-five percent would be reimbursed with the following fiscal year.
Yeah, it's a true up.
Right, it'd be it'd be reimbursed in the following year.
Yeah, it's seventy-five, and I think I just heard you, I think I might repeat what you just said, so I can take it all a little bit, I think you just clarified that. That seventy-five percent reimbursement amount is after.
Correct.
The threshold, it's not, it's not a one for one, it's after we spend about fifty-two thousand dollars.
Right.
So really, it'll be on the threshold of, for sure.
Okay, any other comments or questions on the budget update? Saying now, we move on, student activity uh report, Mr. Connolly?
Yeah, so I have a digital report this month. This is kind of a key month, um. We do this annually, it usually ends up being November, just by the time we get the information from the school, or what what student activity account you're actively running, and the time we kind of compare. Forty-one report for forty-one is usually kind of November, beginning of November. Um, that we have the list of clubs, but what's included in your packet is the first quarter of the fiscal year's reconciled um student club balances. Um, for each elementary school as well as the middle school and high school. And then again, as part of the student activity regulations, they require us to annually approve a list of active student accounts. Uh, so the list as a reference here, this is from the middle school and high school. Uh, we would be, this evening, along with the connected report and the balances, I would be requesting that. We take a a motion to approve these active accounts for the middle school and high school for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Um, we've done this to start the November at this time, and it's just sort of a certification that these accounts are right, that we made the school committee aware of it. That you approved it by a vote, and we have a long distance, we're not doing this, we're not doing this annually, we're doing this kind of as a club. Again, and it was clarified through audits and these areas that they want this done here. Um. So that that's, we won't do that this evening as well. Um, but yeah, I think everybody, we had a super long, really close state back here, these accounts by CPA firm, everything was in good standing. Um, we continue to practice out of these monthly and report on quarterly, these balances, but this is, this is the report. So I don't know if there's questions, hopefully we can take, we can make that motion.
Yeah, okay, uh, my only question, Mr. Connolly, was on um. For the the band, we're not talking about the band, the class, we're talking about, is there a separate band club? Or is it the band class? Cause the band has a.
Yeah, this is a club, this is band club. This is a club that does fundraising activities and other activities, this is not the the curriculum part.
Right, cause it's two different, there's the band, the the class, and then there's a separate band club outside, okay?
So for the ones that have no balance, that we're, there's an assumed, going to be an assumed balance this year, so we're gonna leave them in, so the photography, for example?
Yeah, that's correct, and um. What will happen to the class of twenty twenty-four is usually when the Thanksgiving break actually comes pretty close. Is that class will officially show us the account that they just arranged with the union, we will. We will cut them a check, close that out, and they will usually donate a portion of that back to us, so we, it hasn't happened yet, and. If the next report will reflect that, that balance enough here. Day twenty-three, four.
Okay, somebody want to make the motion?
Move to approve the Q one student activity.
There's actual motion, you can read it.
Read it. I'm not reading it.
No, I'll read it.
I'll read it.
How about this?
You have it in front of me, you print it out, that's that's.
Um, the high, I'm sorry, but um, move to approve that list of active student activity accounts at the high school and middle school for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five year as presented by the administration.
Excellent, John Mill.
Yeah. Adjust my eyes.
I need a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, unanimous? Thank you, Mr. Connolly.
Thank you.
Uh, staffing, Dr. Daly?
Two brief vacancies that were filled, and and Antonia Taylor is is filling in as a building substitute, and Louisa Simpson as a food service worker. For the district, those are the only two updates at this time.
Thank you very much, bids and donations?
Sure.
Mr. Friedman?
Sure, we've got a couple. Uh, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of three hundred sixty dollars and eighty-two cents from the Hood Parent, so Hood School Parent Association. To help fund steam night supplies at at the Hood School.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, unanimous?
Uh, the next one is, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of one thousand eight hundred dollars from the Hood School Parent Association. To help fund field trips for the Hood School.
Second?
Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, unanimous?
That was it.
As always, thank you to the generous community. Uh, we have some grants that we've received, Mr. Friedman, or Dr. Daly, do you want to talk about them first, or do you want Mr. Friedman just to? Go to accept them?
I'll just talk just for a moment, so these are all, I indicated just the the number of years we've received these grants, they've all gone up this year, which is which is great. The first is MYCAP planning implementation for twenty-five thousand dollars, this competitive grant. It's it's about college and career planning, so it's enhancing what we're doing at middle school, um, and now is rolling also into high school. So we're doing not only um curricular work during the day to come up with an academic program for students. But also building on um having some college and, sorry, some career focused professionals come in and speak to students, so. Things like a potential career day, or um expanding what we do currently with the reality fair to have a middle school component. Really excited about that.
And and who did the work for that grant opportunity?
So this grant I worked on with uh with Dr. O'Connell.
Okay, thank you. Going to motion, yeah, let me do one at a time.
Okay, uh, I move that the school committee vote to accept the MYCAP competitive grant from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, unanimous? And then, next one?
Next one is the third year, we've received hate crime prevention, this is the second year of it being funded at fifty thousand dollars. Um, this is allowing us to implement programs designed to prevent hate crimes and incidents of bias in public schools, as defined under MGL, chapter twenty-two C, section thirty-two. So we have groups that are looking over the governor's task force on hate crimes. Um, we've used this for a lot of our community presentations, for our student work, um, even some of the work we're hoping this year with uh the Celtics playbook, which we did not get this year, but. We have all the tools and resources and trained high school students to go work with middle school, so we're hoping to use some of these funds uh to continue to work with them as well.
Thank you, and same same question, who worked on this one?
This is, I worked on this with Mr. Clean.
Mr. Clean, okay.
Uh, I vote that the school committee vote to accept the hate crimes prevention competitive grant from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, unanimous?
And the last one at this time is fourteen thousand dollars for the Arts and Cultural Vitality Index, this is um, it supports, this is the third year supporting our um. Our our work that's being done to look at the arts curriculum across the district. Um, this year we applied as two sites, so we're doing an elementary look and then a high school look, but high school's gonna include middle school, elementary's gonna include all three schools. Uh, we we did that to leverage so that we could get um double the amount of funds this year to support everyone that's working on this grant, cause we're expanding the people that are working on this. We've been very um well received by the department, they've actually offered to come in and speak publicly about the work we've done, cause we've really been a lead here. We are sort of one of the few uh track three districts that's sort of um. Done done some great work at the state level on this, so this is myself working on this with uh Ms. Lister and Mr. Dexter and other members of our our fine arts department, but they're sort of taking the the lead. We have several members of our fine arts group who are also engaged in statewide work, Ash, uh, Ms. Ashley Doak, uh, Mr. Dexter's done quite a bit in the past, and Ms. Lister, so. They're very happy with that work and we're very happy to be able to have our um. Our teachers and everyone that's working on this grant, there will be surveys that are going out um to students to collect information about, you know, do do they have enough arts opportunities here? Do they value them, it goes out to parents, to students, uh, to everyone, so that that will, you know, be shared before that goes out, but just wanted to share all that information, fourteen thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Friedman?
I move that the school committee vote to accept the Arts and Cultural Vitality Index competitive grant from the Department of E- Elementary and Secondary Education, for the amount of fourteen thousand dollars.
Second?
We have a motion, a second, any discussion, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, unanimous? Thank you very much, next agenda item, overnight trip request, I think we have one from the hockey team, that was included in our packet. And this is their annual trip that they're gonna stay overnight in the Falmouth?
Correct.
So, anybody have any questions on it? If not, I think we just do a motion and. Do you want to make a motion to approve the overnight request?
Move to approve the uh twenty twenty-four hockey team uh overnight request.
Second?
Any discussion?
And I believe it's twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, it is actually.
The letter says twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, sorry.
Can I do the, revise the motion, just do the motion again then?
Uh, I move that we accept the twenty twenty-five. Uh, I I move that we vote to, uh. I I move that we vote to accept the twenty twenty-five uh request for overnight trip for the hockey team.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, unanimous?
Took a lot to get out.
There you go. Subcommittee up, subcommittee updates, uh, finance planning team, Mr. Friedman, you wanna?
Yeah, I mean, uh, it's a couple of weeks ago now, um, but we were talking a lot about having a joint discussion across boards. Uh, to talk about some of the preliminary budgets, again, preliminary, but still at least start the discussion so that uh, so that the. Across boards will have the same information and being aligned, but also so that the community will have a sense of uh what's going on before we start getting heavy into budgets into the spring. Um, there's was discussion about doing this the next couple of weeks after Thanksgiving. Um, hasn't been finalized yet, but uh, but I think based on what we've seen in the past, it's something we were really motivated to do. But obviously, we want it, we want the budgets in a position that they're at least in preliminary shape. That way, we're not just presenting something that's gonna be off by a a large percentage, so it's still being discussed, but it it could pop up as soon as the next few weeks.
Yeah, and I would just add that I think I think the main, the main gist of it was, well, first, we talked about the ballot questions that passed, which were nice for the debt, uh, with the debt exclusions. And then we talked about the joint meetings you were talking about, we're thinking about January eighth, and the main goal is not to really look at expenses yet, but really just talk about the revenue. And see sort of the revenues coming in, how the projections are being made, um, and the idea would be to bring the select board, school committee, and finance committee all together, rather than just the chair and the vice chair of each of those. So that we're all on the same page early on about the revenue discussion, and then. You know, we kind of went through a little bit of a calendar of like when people are gonna get reports from, you know, everybody, so we can start looking what the expenses will be. Um, policy subcommittee update. What we did today?
Yeah, I think we went over a lot of it, the social media, and then we just talked about um. Getting and writing a policy for recess for the elementary schools, and I'll submit a draft at the next policy subcommittee meeting.
Sounds good. Athletic subcommittee?
I think we talked about updating the health and wellness policy for that.
Yeah, part, as as part of our handbook, the health and wellness policy, which is where it stands, so I've gone through and looked at other towns and tried to find best practices.
Okay. Was there a fine arts subcommittee that I missed, or did that not happen?
It it was a small group one.
Okay, um, athletic subcommittee?
Uh, subcommittee, uh, November thirteenth, primarily uh field naming, which obviously came up earlier tonight, which has the closeouts uh of the fall season or something to fall out. Really great seasons, both soccer teams did really well, that was great to see. Am I missing anything else, John?
I think are the carry bleachers done, that their project's been completed?
Yeah, bleachers at the baseball fields, yeah.
Right. Um, only other update that I would just add is CPAC, so this could be under correspondence as well, but um. Uh, Ms. Buston reached out to say that she is going to be stepping down as the head of the CPAC, and so. There will need to be discussions about finding somebody to help with that group, so if anybody listening is interested in getting involved, please reach out, cause I think they would like to have some more people involved. Um. Subcommittee schedule?
Oh, wait, sorry, we got substance abuse today.
Oh, substance abuse, yes.
Um, so I already mentioned Detective Lucci, but I think that's worth mentioning again, that we'll try to put the dates up of his cyber presentations and things like that. And one interesting, I unfortunately, I was I was driving, but someone made a comment in the room that, you know, they're not getting enough um people on these presentations, but that if. Parents and others really understood what was going on on social media and what their kids were exposed to, then the room would be standing room only, so. Um, I thought that was interesting. The other thing that I learned today at the subcommittee meeting is there is a unanimous tip line for North Reading PD.
Anonymous?
Yeah, sorry, anonymous tip line, um, and there have been calls recently for underage drinking, and the police respond right away. By first engaging the parents, see if they know what's going on and things like that. Um, and then the only other thing was they are doing their presentations in the middle school for vaping and marijuana, again, I know we received a presentation about that in the spring. And one interesting. Again, I know we received a presentation about that in the spring, and one interesting anecdote from that was, um, they asked some of the eighth graders, if you were a parent and you caught your kids using marijuana in any form, what would you do? What would the punishment be? And they all said it would be really severe, um, so showing how they know that it is, that it is important. Um, and then they also asked, out of, I think it was a hundred and sixty-four kids that they talked to or something, how many of you know what your parents, what your punishment would, would be? Like, have you spoken to your parents about if you're caught doing drinking or marijuana or vaping or anything like that? Are you grounded for two weeks? Are you grounded for seven months? Like, what would the punishment be? And only two people out of the hundred and sixty-four had had that conversation with their parents about exactly what, what it would be. So, something to think about as parents and a community as a whole.
Yeah. Interesting. Any other? Yep.
But I, I believe the tip line is, there's an app also, P three. Did they mention that still being the case?
Didn't hear, no. I didn't hear that, but I was driving, so.
Yeah. I'll double check on that.
Taking notes.
That was all the rage about six, eight years ago, but, but there was. And then we do push out multiple times the, those ads on social media and on, um, you know, cause they make their own little graphics. So, we, we forward those out, um, to try to increase, and they, and they are, I will just advocate, they are great. It's, it has been great working with, um, Detective Lucci in that capacity. Um, it's really exciting to have someone sort of on the inside with some of the cyber, cybersecurity things. That's been a big, as you know, it's one of my goals, um, and he and I have gone to some of the same trainings, and we're trying to go to one that the state's putting on, um, next month. So, it's, it's a great partnership with the NRPD.
Any other subcommittee updates? Um, future meetings, finance planning team is December nineteenth, I think, fifteen AM. Policy subcommittee is December something?
Yeah, we, we're all trying to remember the date that we, we came up with two dates. One is before the next meeting to do the revisions. We're just trying to pin down what we agreed upon.
That will be, that will be.
Didn't save on my computer.
Continued at some point. Athletics subcommittee?
You know, in my office, when I get back on Monday, you know.
Athletics subcommittee is January fifteenth at twelve thirty PM. Fine art subcommittee is December eleventh at three fifteen. Administrative report, Dr. Daly?
Thank you. Just a couple of notes here. We did have, um, a family university update. Um, we had a, a session called the Digital Playbook. Um, this was in collaboration, we are, we are partners of the Massachusetts Partnership for Youth. We are members. And one of the benefits is that we have a certain number of, uh, presentations we can bring in for staff, so we use them on professional development days. We also offer, um, this to members of the community. We had about sixty, I believe, sign up and, and close to forty that participated. Um, I actually went into it thinking it was gonna be, and it was this as well, um, monitoring what my kids are doing, and I left with everything that I'm doing wrong myself. It was, it was great. I mean, it, it actually talked about something called email apnea that I definitely have. And it's the idea that as you're checking email, you're almost holding your breath, and, and it causes, uh, reactions in your body. And I'm like, yep, that, that's how I feel after an hour of checking emails. So, there, it was, it was highly, um, engaging, and I would recommend, uh, this in the future. They did share some resources with us that, that we share that with participants as well, and, um, it was great. So, these are great events. Um, we do hope, you know, there's never a good time for any of this, but we are, I mean, if we had done this one day on a Saturday morning, there would have been ten people here. So, the fact that we're doing them, um, you know, evenings, virtual, we're, we're getting those numbers up. Like I said, I'm very happy with thirty-five, forty, and I know those numbers that, that Ms. Lindes were talking about, you know, we wanna get, uh, those numbers. So, we, we cross promote too, when we have our CIT meetings, we promote theirs, they promote ours, and, cause we're all doing the same work, trying to reach a large audience, so.
Dr. Daly, has the, has, have these numbers gone up? Like, as people get more? I mean, how many of the family universities have you done in the evening since we, that sort of Saturday or that weekend sort of format?
It's been pretty consistent. I will say there's a lot of familiar names. There's, there's people that are coming to, they're sort of groupies of our district events, which is great. Um, but i- i- it is wonderful to see, um, you know, just those numbers. It's, like I said, it's very hard. People have a million things going on.
Yeah. Cause the question's so good, it's just, it's, it's hard to know when to get people to attend.
It is. But we're trying to do something every, so, you know, one of our community action groups is social media. We, we're not actively meeting at this time. We're focusing on other things, but for the fall, this was sort of something that Mr. Clean, um, arranged as he was setting up, uh, doing something for professional days. He said, let's do one for the, for the community too. So, this was great. Just a note on the brush fires. Um, you know, the, hopefully, the rain has been a significant help. Uh, obviously, we wanna thank everyone who worked, our, our fire department, everyone who worked so hard on this. Uh, there was communication from the district and from each school about case-by-case decisions. And, um, based on where the school was, based on the time of day of a recess, we made different decisions. Um, if the air quality was not there, and I, I do think about this a lot in the first item tonight, you know, what data we would have had during this. Um, but the, you know, different decisions were made in this building. We shut down vents for a certain period of time based on air quality. Um, it was really one day in particular in early November that was, that was tricky. And then last week, there was another day, I believe it was last week, um, as, as different, uh, patterns shifted. But I just wanted to give that, um, update, and as you know, I, I believe we're part of a group that applied for emergency, um, you know, as an emergency situation, so. Any questions about that or what's happened here or?
Nope. Yes.
Okay, we.
Thanks to the fire department and DPW.
Absolutely.
Outstanding.
Uh, we closed our principal search on November twenty-second. We had over twenty candidates submit for the position. Um, and I would say of those, there is a good, a good number of high-quality, uh, licensed candidates that we're going to be selecting from. Um, I'm reviewing this with Cynthia Conant, Director of Student Services, Boyne Stories, Human Resource, Administrator Kathy O'Connell, Middle School Principal. Um, we are selecting that. We have our committee that's ready to roll. I do have to figure out the next step for the school committee. I believe there are three interested, maybe more. Um, I think there's one person that filled out the form, one person that emailed me. So, I'm not sure. I, I, I wanted to bring it here just to say.
Are we supposed to fill out the parent form?
Do we kinda draw names from a hat? Um, like, how, how, that's sort of what I wanna do because I find it challenging to try to figure out who, who to choose. I thought we discussed.
I was gonna say, we could have a baking contest.
I'm, I'm game.
Joe, I'm in.
I mean, my, I did not.
Karaoke.
As long as you don't cheat and have grade unit.
I did about, not, not, not put my name, and the only thing I would say is like, just balancing out the committee also. If there's a person that you think is, I don't know, different represent, I think, I think different people offer different things here, so.
Whatever, however you wanna do it. Um, the, you think twenty's a good number?
And how many were internal versus external? I'm curious.
There's one internal, I believe.
And nineteen external? Okay. And then, and is twenty a fair number? Like, I, I, I don't know what is typical for high school principal searches these.
I think that's pretty good. Yeah, and I, and I would say, uh, close to half came in last week, which is, you know, so that, I was a little nervous with the, the longer window, the time of year, all those things. Um, but I think, I think that's just typical that you see an uptick in the, you know, we had a long window, so people got it in that toward the end. There were two long essay questions too.
Principals procrastinate too.
Yep.
Principals procrastinate too.
So, um, but.
Okay.
We're excited about that. So, the, the next steps would be, um, we have an orientation meeting coming up, and we have, um, the interviews are in the, the second week of December, so. Should I just draw?
Probably.
I'm, I'm trying, cause I, I, I have a hard time.
Whatever you feel is appropriate. I, I, you know, I trust.
Is it, is it four that are interested?
I'm interested.
No.
No.
I, I just thought Noel and Jeff were doing it.
For the record, I was the email.
Yeah. We have one, one school committee member out of the three that are interested, so I will, I will pull, uh, from a hat. I will, I will videotape the, uh, the, uh, the name for it. We'll do it, we'll do a lottery.
There you go.
Thank you, though. And it's great to have so much interest, and as I've said to everyone, cause we had over fifty people that were interested in being on the committee. There will be plenty of opportunities to interview, um, and to meet and greet the finalists and, and have input and questions and discussion, so. And then finally, I just wanted to share the NEASC updates. Um, you know, there, there is an upcoming visit for the fall of twenty twenty-five. There, um, recently, the school did surveys of teachers, students, and staff. And I just shared out, you know, for the committee, we're not gonna go over it, uh, in great detail, but I did just share this out for your perusal, um, some information about, um, student survey, and then their staff, faculty, and then parents. So, this document highlights some of the questions where there was, uh, interesting, and, and mostly what we saw across the board was a good amount of agreement. Sorry, it's, it's, uh, wrong direction. But, um, but agreement among the different subgroups, um, that were, that were interviewed for the survey. So, I'm not sure how much information the committee wants to receive. I thought just maybe updates here. Mr. LePret would come in and give updates if there are questions, but I felt that, um, just including in the administrative's report at this time, just so that it's on your radar, that you know there was a survey, there was discussion, and there is a visit coming up in October. That's sort of a big deal, um, for that, for that process.
I'm not sure about others, but I actually couldn't access, uh, the document, so.
I will, I will double check to make sure that that's, uh. Should be anyone with the link, I will double check it.
It's all good.
Well? Okay. No correspondence? Future business? We have a meeting six thirty PM on December ninth. Uh, and that's student services coming in, Cynthia Conant. And then Wednesday, January eighth, potent, potentially. Um, does that work for everybody, January eighth? Does that work for the room, Dr. Daly?
It works for the room. Yeah, we have.
Does that work for people, January eighth?
It should be able to.
So, do we not have one on December eleventh?
We do not.
December eleventh?
We do not. We were holding the eleventh.
I was holding that, yeah.
We're holding two December dates. Those are.
Oh, yeah.
In release.
Okay.
So, the only date potentially now is this January eighth. There's also, just for your own, there is a possible, uh, town meeting potential in January as well, but that's still being finalized.
I partially screwed that up cause I was going to California, so I was gonna miss the meeting, so.
Oh, okay. No, no, that's fine. It actually didn't work great for me, so.
Okay, and I think Mr. Friedman was gonna be gone too.
Uh, there was a potential, like, trip got moved. I, that was the trip I just had.
So, January eighth would be taking the place of.
January eighth. We haven't, we threw that out as a date last, at last meeting, so.
Yeah.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
No, make a motion.
Oh, sorry. I'm tired. I move to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor?
I'm not the official second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you, everyone.